The topic isn't always necessary to speak about.
Uh, call the Select Board to order. Today is May 7th, 2019. To get us started this evening, we're going to begin with the swearing in of Mark Doxer. So why don't we get that underway? Do you have anything you'd like to swear on?
Yes.
Do we have the flag?
Anything you'd like to swear at?
(laughter)
I swear at all the time, so.
Raise your right hand.
I solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent on me as a member of the Select Board according to the best of my ability and understanding, agreeably to the Constitution and laws of the Town of Massachusetts and the bylaws of the Town of Reading, so forth. Congratulations.
Want to take a photo?
Yeah, sure.
All right, let's take a photo of the product.
It is a photo log. Where are we going? I can't find it. Walk the sun here. First now, everybody who'll pick the lens. Ready, one, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Thank you.
All right. So, why don't we start with liaison reports? It should be, I think, on the shorter side today. Andy, I'll start with you.
I went to a couple of meetings, but in the interest of time, I will pass over Mark.
Okay.
I don't think I'm the liaison to anything yet, so I don't say that.
And I imagine you're in the same situation?
I am.
Okay. John?
Well, I'm gonna make up for what they're not doing. You know, I have to catch up on. First and foremost, I wanted to talk a little bit about Arcasa. They met, as they do, on, I think, the Fourth Thursday is when we meet, April 25th. And a lot of updates going on, actually. Erica was hosting two workshops, Parent University on March 30th, which was on understanding the changing landscape of vaping and intro to mental health first aid. She also spent two days at Austin Prep, working with an eighth grade group, which I think is great that that's going on there. The ongoing data collect that always happens around this time of year in the middle schools, wrapped up in late April, and we should be seeing the results of that, I would say, probably in June, mid to late June would be my guess. Kind of in the what's new category, Arcasa's been recruiting youth within the schools to work on the vaping prevention outreach program, especially in the middle schools, which is great. Matter of fact, there's an upcoming community conversation focused on that, and that's gonna be hosted by Senator Lewis. It's gonna happen on May 15th at the American Civic Center in Wakefield. There's always a lot going on over there, and, you know, we spend an hour just getting caught up every time we're together. But one thing I would like to do is read just a short memo, if I could, and it has to do with the Outstanding Arcasa Youth Leader of the Year. Mason Hayes, a senior at Reading Memorial High School, has served on two Arcasa-related leadership projects during his high school years. Last year, Mason was trained as a peer leader on Arcasa's student outreach team on vaping prevention. Mason was one of six students that developed an entertaining game show to bring to Parker Middle School to educate children in grades six through eight on vaping prevention. Mason went a step further in his presentation to students by sharing his personal experience with learning about vaping. As a younger RMHS student, Mason was caught vaping and attended the Arcasa Chemical Health Education Program. Following his participation in the program, Mason discontinued his use of vaping products and shared the positive benefits from stopping, including an improvement in his athletic performance and overall health. Mason's willingness to share his story was well received by the middle school students. When recruiting for this year's group to conduct similar programs, three separate classes of ninth graders recalled Mason visiting their school. Mason has made an impact in conducting outreach to younger peers. Mason also participated in the 2017-18 Reading Peer Leaders Project on Healthy Relationships, which included intensive training through the Game Change Program and biweekly meetings with peers and adult advisors. Mason will be attending Regis College next year, and Arcasa is very proud to honor Mason as Arcasa's Outstanding Youth Leader of the Year with a small, very small scholarship grant to go along with that to help him with half a book. So I did wanna, you know, take a minute to focus on him. It was, you know, I think it's very interesting when the young people step up and recognize the problem and recognize positive solutions, and this young man has done that. The other thing to make a note of, 'cause it's coming up tomorrow, is the Teen Dating Violence Awareness. That's gonna be going on at the Reading Police Department tomorrow, Wednesday, May 8th, from 6:00 to 7:30. So I hope we have a good turnout there. I think that's a really productive way for some time to be spent. The other thing, in not exactly a committee, but liaison to the, one of the projects that's going on in town, and I'd like to keep us up to date on that, the Postmark Project, which is, of course, the old post office. Foundation, as I'm sure most of us know, the foundation excavation continues. I think they're going to China with it. I mean, it's deep. And, you know, that was kind of a conscious decision that they made, rather than utilize... There was some thought originally in the plans that they were gonna utilize the existing concrete, cut and paste, and they just kinda decided to do the right thing and pull it all out and start over from scratch. Just from a general standpoint, it's gonna improve the way everything works, you know, wastewater management, all of those kinds of things. So that's continuing. I think it's important to note that this project is precisely on schedule. They've got it laid out in a very systematic way. They're hoping that there'll be completion, and based on what they've done so far, I think they'll hit this date, July 2020, is when everything should be complete and, you know, ready for occupancy. So that's kind of the plan. One of the things that you will see rising soon is, first step is, you put an elevator pit slab. I'm learning a lot about construction, and, you know, a lot of people have seen downtown, you know, down on Main Street at the Snokeville Project, you know, the elevator tower goes up first, and it's kinda stark when it goes up. And I'm just kinda giving everybody a heads up that we're gonna have a similar thing that will be happening at the Postmark Project. The building is built around that. That all has to happen first. So that's one of the things that we're gonna be seeing coming up soon. Happy to report, we have no neighborhood complaints either to the developer or here at Town Hall, which is very positive, in my opinion. Could have something to do with the fact that on a particularly dusty day, the project superintendent was wandering around with car wash tickets and handing them out to everybody that he felt really got negatively affected. They're really, this is kind of a, I think it's a poster child for how projects ought to happen. I mean, the, you know, what's going on, you know, things will come up. So for example, it was Concrete Day, and four concrete trucks showed up at once. You can only fit one in there at a time. They made a call to Town Hall, they said, "Look, we got concrete trucks everywhere, but we got it figured out. We're gonna stage them, one at a time. They're gonna come off of Sanborn, you know, around onto Haven for a brief bit, and then into the project." I think that when, in construction projects, stuff always happens. It's just kind of the nature of what happens. But these developers are trying to stay ahead of it, keeping the town advised, and I think in general, we're gonna continue to see an excellent on-time project, and from their perspective, they're hoping for an on-budget, you know, project as well. So that's my catch-up.
Thanks, John. My update is, Andy and I are part of the Volunteer Appointment Subcommittee, and we've been meeting with new and returning volunteers, so nothing to report yet. We're hoping to have those recommendations for our first meeting in June for full board approval.
All right. I have one question, Madam Chair. I remember that Andy, there was one week that you were possibly going to be out of town or on a deal.
One day, yeah.
Are we covered? Do we need to have someone stand in for you first?
We need to get through the meetings just around.
Okay. Perfect. Very good.
Yes, thank you. All right, so, moving right along to Town Manager Report.
Thank you. Just, I'm gonna read a couple of quick things. One, we got a letter from Mastod talking about the paving of Route 28. They are gonna start in the south section by the Stonemine, presuming the MWA's water main work isn't in the way. They do estimate that the project is gonna take 502 calendar days. So I had been asked questions as recently as this morning, and then I got this. And, "Could they do it in a year?" And I said, "Well, if the weather's perfect, they might, but there's no way with 502 days." And that assumes average weather. So this will definitely go into next spring. My understanding is they'll go up to the train tracks this construction season and probably stop there, and then pick it up. And I'm not sure if they'll come south from the north or go north from here, from the square, up to the north Reading line. So that'll be a major project and a major inconvenience. We have not heard what construction hours they want to work. When we've worked with other projects, more going east-west, they're very sensitive to rush hour, and they try to work around that. So it might start at 10 o'clock, and be sensitive to the two different directions. The north-south ones are pretty obvious. I have a letter here that I'd just like to read quickly. It's to the Honorable Vanessa Alvarado, Chair. Pursuant to my recent conversations with the Town Manager regarding the town's budget priorities, I'm pleased to inform the Reading Select Board that several local initiatives have been approved for state funding assistance as part of the FY20 House Budget. The following earmarks were included in the House Budget as a result of a series of amendments I filed with Representative Hagerty, and this is from Representative Jones. $60,000 for the purchase of an elder and human services van, $50,000 for pedestrian crosswalk lights on Lowell Street, and $75,000 for safety improvements at Reading Memorial High School. I've also talked to Senator Lewis, as has Representative Jones. They're coming out with a budget sometime, possibly even today, but this week certainly, and, you know, we're hopeful that the Senator will also include some version of those same amendments. And then when the two bodies get together, they'll remember to include all of them in the final budget. So I just wanted to give you that update.
All right, thank you.
The Board has received, or at least in one case, not received, several emails on Havill Street, most recently from Fred Van Magnus. I have to track down who did and who didn't get it. We'll figure that out. But broadly speaking, this is an issue that a couple of Board members have replied to that I'm aware of, 'cause I've been copied. Certainly it's up to the Chair and the body as to when to take this up again as discussion. But we did ask a legal question of Town Council about 10 days, almost two weeks ago, and he's just been swamped with town meetings, not only from Reading, but from others. But I'm gonna reach out to him again tomorrow and ask the question, and that'll help guide whatever the path is forward. Honestly, we've heard two conflicting things from the state, so we need to get to the bottom of that. So I just wanted to update you on that. And then lastly, I did wanna thank the Water Department. As you know, we did have a water main break in Stonem. Reading had the foresight in joining the MWA of insisting redundancy, and it certainly paid off. They're also really clever. They figured out some, I call it water geometry, of how to not care that there was a problem in Stonem by re-roading a lot of water mains. So it's really a very creative bunch. I think the actual impact on the Town of Reading was very small. I think that we got reports of some rusty and discolored water for a short period. But what really could've been a disaster, water is something we all assume you turn the faucet on, and there it is. You know, it's a lot of thought, and a lot of effort, and a lot of planning behind that. And, you know, I'm very thankful that we were able to avoid a real problem with that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Bud. All right, so we'll move on to public comment. A couple of guidelines, if anyone is interested in speaking today. So I'd like to ask that public comments be kept under what is under the purview of this Board. Derogatory remarks will not be allowed. Election campaign-related comments are discouraged. Due to open meeting law, the Board is unable to engage with the public when comments arise. So when we thank you for your comment and only are able to provide information but not actually engage, please know that's why. If you'd like to have us add something to a future agenda, we can certainly do that. And announcements of town events are always encouraged, so if you're watching from home, please do feel free to comment at future meetings. This is a great time to let the community know what's going on. So with that, I will open it up to public comment. Please raise your hand.
Good evening, and I'll keep this brief. I know you have a lot on the agenda tonight. I'm actually here tonight as Chair of the Cemetery Board, just as kind of an update to apprise you of what's been happening in cemeteries. Last year, we spent about six months working on reorganizing the rules for the cemetery. Most of you are aware of that happened in about six months leading up to last May 1st. May 1st, we had a public hearing, and after that, we actually, you know, put the information out there. It was in the DPW report that came out, the June issue, actually, the DPW newsletter mentioned some of those rules. It's very important for people to understand that they're not new rules. The biggest problem we were having was the rules had not, for a while, been enforced, and that led to kind of a little bit of a problem. Wanted to make it aware that when the cemetery workers, who work very hard to maintain our cemeteries, when they mow and weed whack, if there were small objects, trinkets, coins, marbles, and so on, on stones, they become objects of, you know, which could hurt a worker or a visitor. So we just tightened up things, tried to reorganize them in better groups, hearing the rules, and things kind of seemed to go fairly smoothly. We had quite, we had an article in, there was an article in the front page of the Chronicle shortly after that. Phil Brown and I came at your request in July and just surprised you, again, what the problem, what the issue was and why we were taking on that. However, this spring, as it gets warm and the Royal Day is approaching and so on and so forth, we've received several complaints. I don't know if you've, it's been a lot on social media, too. Some of the complaints have come to Town Hall. Michael Hallard has been handling those very well. We're not trying to keep families and friends from honoring their loved ones with decorations, but they've gotten out of hand. So in working with that, both through Town Hall and through the workers at the cemetery, they know a lot of the visitors come on a regular basis, and they talk to them, explain them. Most people are very, once it's explained, they're really okay with it and they understand. Some of the cemetery workers have had a few incidents where people have come to the cemetery and because they're there working, receiving, and so on and so forth, they have literally screamed for 45 minutes at some of the cemetery workers about, you know, "What were we thinking? And why are we doing these things?", and so on. So I just, we just wanted to, as a Board, we met last week, again, with Memorial Day coming, just make sure that you're aware of what's happening and why, and that we're really, you know, everybody is really working toward just having the cemetery safe for the workers and also aesthetically pleasing to everyone. So that's, you know, kind of where we're at. As we're also putting up some new signs. One of the only other major issue we have with cemeteries, and I think people do it with the great intention, they pull, when they come to the cemetery, they pull off the road onto the grass. That makes more work for the cemetery guys, because especially if it's been raining or whatever, it digs up the grass, and they have to work on it. And to be perfectly honest, there are people buried on that grass, and I don't think people even think about that. So I think we just want to remind people that stay on the grass. New signs being printed that say, "Park on the road, not the grass." And we're putting up new entrance signs, which hit the major, things about, you know, overflowers, no other, you know, planting trees, hedges, you know, that kind of thing. And so those signs at the entrances will be going up, because the ones that are up there are getting really, really shabby, and so we decided to put new ones up. So as I said, I just wanted to let you know what's happening. If you have any feedback, you know, that would be the reason.
Thank you very much. If anyone has questions about what the rules are, both the existing and any new enforcement, the information is all available on the website, correct?
It is. At the cemetery page. At the cemetery, we'll have the link to it, you know, the rules, you know, to get to all the rules on the website.
Great. And if anyone has any questions or doesn't have internet access, you can absolutely call Town Hall, be directed to the appropriate staff, and they can explain the rules. Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? Okay. All right. So the Reading Garden Club is having their annual plants, I believe. We have some... Hello?
I understand from the big sign, it's Plant and Bake Sale.
Well, I just happened to hear.
And swag. And swag, too. Garden Club, swag.
You wanna sit down, or you're more comfortable?
Oh, I'm glad to stand up. So first of all, I bring greetings from the Reading Garden Club. We are so happy to be in town. We have been working to accomplish our mission in town, in Reading, for 60 years. I don't know if you realize that we, at the beginning, we did a lot with things like bird watching and things like that, and now we've progressed and have included more civic-minded I noticed that some of you have our liaison to different groups in town. Well, luckily, Jane Fiore somehow knew that, and now we have presented each of you with a Reading Garden Club, Mrs. Bob's, a Reading Garden Club among. Of course, filled with candy for stressful ones, although I'm sure you have no stress with it. So we hope that you all feel comfortable in being a liaison with us, just, you know, call me anytime or anywhere in the club, and I hope you enjoy your months.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Well, so our mission, we have three parts to our mission. First of all, it is, the first thing is to support community, the community organizations in Reading. Another mission is to educate both community and educate our members. And the third is to beautify Reading. We want, we want everyone to live in a beautiful town. To accomplish the support of the community organizations, here's what, here's what we do. First of all, we have different committees to accomplish each of these goals. And we have a committee that visits the nursing homes, and Artis and Daniels, and they do activities with the residents. We support the memory program at the library and do planting activities with those people. We do a collection for the food pantry. Some months, we give $200 to the food pantry and food. And we also do a linen drive for the Mission of Deeds. We are working with the three, off the 375th Roots of People, the committee, to make the centerpieces for the activities, the three activities at Parker Tavern. And we're doing that along with the Crystal Garden Club, which is another garden club in town. So we support the 375th by doing that, and we also take part in lots of community activities such as Friends and Family Day. We have an activity where the kids come to the, to our tent, and the kids can plant, plant usually as impatience, and take them home and put them in their garden. So we're trying to get the community engaged in all, in so many things. We also educate. We educate the community as well as educating our own members. We do a, we do some lectures at the library that are open to the public, free of charge. Sometimes we do them on our own, and sometimes we do it with friends, the Friends of the Reading Library, which we hope to do a lot more next year. There was one on climate change. I don't know if you recall that a few years ago. This year, one of them was, the one lecture we did was Pets in Your Garden. So what's good and what to plant in your garden if you have pets. We also have, this year, Louise Morrison, who's here, and I have worked with the Environmental Club at the, at the high school, and we, Louise especially, worked hard on explaining to the kids sustainability in Reading. You know, if you have a garden, is it, you know, how sustainable is it to support your family and so on? We, we also give a $1,000 scholarship to someone at the high school every year. So we do lots of things like that with the community, and then we have so many things to educate our members. At our monthly meetings, we have people that do lectures and container gardens, birds in your garden, how to, what to plant in order to attract birds, so on and so on. We have a monthly newsletter that has lots of hints to use in your garden, and we, let's see what else. Oh, and we go on outings to very interesting places such as Mount Auburn Cemetery, to learn the history of that. So, and to beautify Reading. This, I think, is near and dear to many people at Town Hall, because we've done the plantings around Town Hall, and there's one section where, right there where the old library used to be. That is going to be, God willing, and not much rain, I hope, we're gonna have that planted by the end of May, and in time for the 375th celebration. So we're really looking forward to that. Mike Hanaford is working closely with our committee to get that accomplished. And something to tie in with what Giddy mentioned about the cemetery, the War Memorial on Salem Street, right in front of, right across from Town Hall. Mike took out the bushes there, and we're going to replant that with red, white, and blue flowers to, and have that done by Memorial Day, when they have the ceremony there. And so it's really important for us to do that. Every now and then, we run over to the library and also do some weeding and so on. One of the very favorite places in Reading that we take care of is the Parker Tavern, the gardens in front of Parker Tavern, and I'm sure most of you have seen that. It's hard, because you wanna do period, which period of history do you, do you reflect in your garden? Is it an herb garden? Is it from the 1800s and so on? So we always have that, that little dilemma, but it always looks great. And we also, we also support the Reading Land Trust, which is, they conserve land in Reading. They put this land to keep, for, you know, just to keep this land for us to have in Reading, so it's not as crap. Reading, so it's not as crabbed. And then, the very last thing that we do to beautify Reading is a collaboration with the town. Land that belongs to the town of Reading, and we, we organize people who, who would like to unify those islands and plots of land in Reading to, and we have a little sign. For example, I'll just say, I'm in a friend's, so, just someone named him. He has a site down by the train station, and he beautifies it with flowers and frills and so on. And then, we have a sign that says his name and what he likes to, he wants to have on the sign, and he takes care of it all, all summer long. And then, in the town provides the land, we provide the sign, and Tim provides the work and so on. So, and then, by the way, if you'd like to do, do one of these, there are a few barrels left at the depot, if you'd like to, if you want to be, just contact me. So, that's, that's it in a nutshell, real fast little nutshell. And if you would like to contact anyone in the garden club, especially me, since I forgot to mention I was the president, I'm Marion Haines. We have a website, www.reddinggardenclub.org. And you can also just Google Reading Garden Club, Reading Mass, because otherwise you might get Reading, Pennsylvania, or Reading, California, and that, it'll come up for you. So, and how do we do all this? How do we get all of this accomplished? Well, we have a very active Ways and Means Committee that raises money, and all the money we raise from public activities passed by our bylaws has to go right back to the town. So, we, it's great because that's how we, we do so many things. So, Jean Stewart is in charge of this sign, the Reading Garden Club Plant Sale on May 18th, so she's going to speak now.
Thanks.
And we're all praying for not monstern rain, which we've done before, and I'm quoting the same song, I'll try it over here. The plant sale, after we start the planting for it in the fall, and there's a whole series of activities and details that we need to take into account. The town is incredibly supportive. We meet with them on a yearly basis to go over what our plan is, what we need from them. They offer us suggestions, and we're incredibly supportive. And the DPW, we've been a firm without the DPW. So, shout out to the DPW. Mike Haniford, I think he's so tired of hearing from me. We do one thing, we make sure that they feed them regularly. One of the benefits of Montrez is we must feed people, too. So, at this point, we're working on the final list, I actually cast them onto McConaughey's. One of our biggest suppliers is McConaughey's. We use them both for our annuals and for our natives and perennials. They're very responsive to us. They send us absolutely beautiful stuff. Sometimes we don't know what's going to arrive the day of our sale despite what we order, because if it doesn't look good enough, they won't sell it. So, our flowers are phenomenally healthy. So, what we do is we work on developing a list of all the annuals we want, and focusing this year especially with the 375th colors are purple and white. It's going to be a lot of purple and white and pine mix. Just plants that will work in shade, in sunshine, in mixture. We also work on ordering vegetables and herbs and fruits, some fruit. We have hanging baskets. We have the perennials and the native plants. We're really focusing on including a lot in what we order to help the environment. One of the things that we've been working on, particularly in Reading over the past several years, is including more native plants that will sustain the life cycle of the monarch butterfly who has disappeared. I notice a lot more in my backyard, so they must be around today. So, we're really kind of focusing on trying to get native plants. And native plants is kind of a hard concept. The easiest way to understand native plants is native plants are plants that were here before anybody moved to this North American continent. They're plants that just grew naturally. And the importance of native plants is that they sustain the local ecology system, the wildlife. We have certain plants that bees need if they live in this area or that area. So, we're trying to order the right plants for the right, important, hard-to-eat plants. So, we are working really heavily on that. We've got all our details done. And as Marion said, this is our biggest fundraiser of the year. Whatever we get goes right back into town by projects. And we, as I said, we hope, we hope, but it's just not monstern rain. Of course, we have had plant sales and monstern rains before. We've all survived, but the plants look better. One of the things we've tried to do this year, too, that made us a master too, is that a lot of times when plants come, it's still May. They're not going to be gloriously in full bloom, and most of the garden club people don't want them gloriously in full bloom because it's only May. But, so we started putting 375th and Mayors and Perennials picture signs up. This is what is going to look like, different information about them. And I think it's been really well received by the public, because sometimes when you see that green plant, you don't know it's going to develop this beautiful white foliage or this beautiful red flower. So, we're trying to get people in on that information about that. So, we'd like to invite you all to come on the 18th. We'll be there early. The plants will be there, fingers crossed by 7:00 in the morning, and fingers even more crossed to those two that won't be green and literally cold, and we make it through every year. So, if anybody has any questions, we'd be happy to turn it to them.
Thank you so much for, for coming to speak with us. I go every year, it's wonderful. I have milkweed in my lawn, so. So, that's, for those of you watching at home, if you didn't catch that, that's May 18th, correct?
Yes, May 18th. It's always the Saturday after Mother's Day.
Okay.
You can get the dance football with women.
Ah, that's a good time.
I just like to say, I, I'm so glad you come once a year. And, you know, people are, people don't realize that things that are going on and the way the town looks has a lot to do with you and your members, and that has been true for decades. And, you know, I think it's really important that you have this visit on an annual basis. I love that it comes kind of right as spring is coming, and, and I just, I think, I think it's great that you're here, and it's great to hear about what you do and just to remind everybody what a real jewel the garden club is, and thanks for the bling.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thank you very much. All right. So, next up, we have Memorial Day. I believe we're, we have Kevin here. Thank you. I'll hand it over to Kevin.
I have to see what's in here. Oh my, we're going in for the candy, huh? Well. It's health, health food. Taste yourself.
All right. Well, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. With two new members on the board, I figured it'd be beneficial to come by and talk a little bit about what we do on Memorial Day, but also a little bit about what we do before Memorial Day. Memorial Day is on Monday, May 27th, but much goes in to preparing for Memorial Day before that. We have 2,252 veterans' graves in Reading's four cemeteries. For many years, Frank Driscoll, who had this job before me, was the custodian of soldiers, sailors, and graves, and he did a great job. Unfortunately, Frank passed away two or three days after Memorial Day last year. Right now, Mr. Ray Boyd, who is a Vietnam veteran, Navy C.B., I believe is interviewed for the position, has stepped up. He's a great guy. He's a retired Army reservist, and he'll do a great job. Frank's daughter, Caitlin Salmon, who has been very involved and probably the brains behind Frank doing such a great job all these years. But she's going to continue helping us out and donating her time. She'll be out there with us. I just want to say first, I started as a Veteran Service Officer four years ago yesterday, and I got here, and it's three weeks before Veterans Day. And Bob said, "Here's your desk, here's your computer, Veterans, Memorial Day's in three weeks." Good luck. Good luck. So, I'm just happy to have more time to, to plan this than, than I did four years ago. But preparing for Memorial Day is really a team effort. Again, Mike Haniford, who people have talked about, does a super job with his, with his crew up at the cemetery, getting the cemeteries ready after, after a tough winter. Kim Honnyslager.
Right there.
Right there. She does her GIS magic. She pulls the cemetery veterans' records, merges them with the cemetery maps, and comes up with these, these fancy maps that have every, has every veteran's grave listed on it. Nice. So, we begin on Wednesday, May 22nd. We have all kinds of volunteers that come out, the lodgets, come out and help us. But we started at Laurel Hill, and we actually work behind the cemetery crews. As soon as they've cut the grass, we're out there putting the markers out. And it takes till Friday to get all four cemeteries done. And I encourage people, if they haven't been in the cemeteries after they've been decorated, please get out there and look. Cemetery crew does an amazing job, and just to go out and see the two, over 2,000 veterans that have served, it really looks great. So, if you get a chance, go out, take a look, and pay your respects to the folks. The Real Fund starts on Saturday morning when the geraniums get delivered to each of the four cemeteries. And we probably have between 40 and 50 Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, Cub Scouts, town volunteers, and they are placing the flags and the geraniums at each of the veterans' graves. And that whole process is probably done in about three hours. It's, it's chaos, but it's, it's fun. Again, I encourage it to get everybody to get out there and pay their respects. The marker flags and geraniums stay out for approximately two weeks. Last year, we recruited Boy Scout Troop 702 to actually pick up all the marker flags and geraniums, and they bring them back to the cemetery building up at Laurel Hill. Those geraniums are then available to the residents to pick up, beginning on, I think it's June 10th, is will be the date this year. And as always, donations are, are always welcome. The geraniums are not paid by the town. They are paid far by the Veterans Memorial Trust Fund, which was established, I'm not sure how many years ago, but.
More than 10.
Okay. So, that more than covers the, the flags or the, the flowers that we put out every year. We replace approximately 25% of the flags each year that get damaged due to the weather, and the state covers 75% of the cost for those flags every year. Some towns actually replace all their flags, which I feel is a waste. So, after all that's done, we get to Memorial Day, which is on Monday. The parade will start at the Legion, right down on Ash Street at approximately 9:00. And it's great, every, every group comes up, all the dance clubs and Cub Scouts, Boy Scouts. So, it's, it's a short parade that comes up Main Street, and we'll go over to Laurel Hill. We will, we have our largest turnout. And again, I've been amazed at the way that Reading comes out to support veterans every year, Veterans Day, Memorial Day. Again, Mother Nature plays a big part in turnout, but it's, it's always been very, very well attended, so it's, it's great to see. This year, we're fortunate to have Reading's own Brigadier General Jack Hammond, who was a 1979 graduate of, of Reading High School. Had a 31-year military career and is now the Executive Director of Home Base, which is an organization part of, they work with the Red Sox Foundation and Mass General Hospital to provide care for the invisible wounds of war to veteran service members and their families. And it's a great organization. They do amazing work out there, so. We're very happy to have General Hammond. We also have the Reading Police Department as the honor guard. We'll have the high school band. Joe, the director, Joe Mulligan, is always very supportive and does a great job with Memorial Day and throughout the year at different ceremonies. We always welcome somebody from the Select Board to, to speak at each of the cemeteries. So, I look forward to having you join us if you're available. Who else? I haven't heard from Representative Jones or Hagerty yet. They are invited. Unfortunately, Senator Lewis is not able to attend yet, but hopefully Representative Jones or Hagerty will be able to attend. The Laurel Hill is, is the biggest ceremony of the day and the most well-attended. Once that's done, we do go over to Forest Glen Cemetery, which is, this is Veteran's Circle at, at Forest Glen, where it's, it's only veterans who are buried there. So, we'll have the ceremony there at approximately 10:45. We'll move on to Charles Lawn Cemetery at 11:30, and then Wood End Cemetery at 12:00 noon.
Do those times again.
That would be great.
Forest Glen at 10:45, Charles Lawn at 11:30, and Wood End at 12:00 noon. And again, I just, I appreciate all the tremendous support from all the residents to make this happen, and I invite everybody out, and I look forward to seeing you. Thank you. So, anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Kevin. No, these are, the, these services, I've attended several years. They're a wonderful way to recognize those who have died in the line of service in our community. They're, they're powerful, they're inclusive, and my thanks to you for organizing them.
Very well.
So, at this point, traditionally, we do have Select Board members speak at each of the cemeteries. I'm curious if people are going to be available this Memorial Day weekend?
I think I am. I've had the opportunity. I don't know that any of the four of you have had that opportunity to speak, so let me defer, so that you get the opportunity to do that, but I'm happy to do it if we have a, if we have a vacancy.
I can be available, but I'm going, I was planning on being out of town. I spoke last year, and you know, you did as well.
Yeah, I have to, unfortunately, I have to be out of town, six hours away, so hard to get back in time.
I am out of town. The question is if I'm going to be back on Monday, and I'm not sure yet.
Okay. Let's, let's work on that. All right.
Well, I mean, these are spread out enough that we'll, we need to be at all, yeah, so. I know what I'm going to be doing all morning.
No, I, I am available and certainly willing and interested. Okay.
Thanks to you folks for.
Let's try and coordinate that, the rest of that offline then. All right, great. So, moving on, we have the 375th Celebration update, and there is a sea of purple in the audience, so welcome. Who is our official speaker today?
Is it us?
Okay, wonderful. Come on.
Can you just put their computer?
I sent the. Get my smartphone.
Yeah. Thanks, Bob.
Nope, absolutely.
Hi, everyone, and thank you so much for having Reading 375 here at your Select Board meeting tonight. In a little bit more detail, I know you all know that I spoke at a town meeting very globally about Reading 375. I hope since then, you've had an opportunity to check out the website, to untake one of the flyers. What we wanted was an opportunity to go through all of the events that we have planned for the two week, a period, to educate you, but largely the public, about everything that's happening during this two-week celebration of our town's 375th anniversary from May 31st to June 15th. Doing that all in 10 minutes is a challenge, but I'm a really fast talker, and I brought in notes, so.
Do you want to say that for us?
That'd be fantastic. Reading375.com. I would not try to take a single note, because I really am going to talk fast, and when you hear the length of events and the number of them, it's on the website. That's really all you need to know, is reading375.com. Every event, the date, the time, and the location, the details are on the website. I'm joined tonight by the many members of the Reading 375 Steering Committee. Phil Rushworth is our chair. Katie Robertson, who's in back, has been instrumental in getting this project for more than a year off the ground. Sarah Brocolacchio, right there. I'll be chatting about her when we come to one of our special events in a little bit. She's also on the Steering Committee and has been engaged for over a year. Alan Ace and Amanda Folds were unable to attend tonight, but send their best to the Select Board and have been, they've just been huge in organizing and moving forward with a lot of energy. So, with that, I'd like to start with the events. Sound good? Okay. Reading 375 kicks off on Friday, May 31st, with opening ceremonies that will be at 7:00 P.M. here on the Reading Common. There will be a Jumbotron on the Reading Common, yes! On that huge screen that will be visible from the whole common will be an original, brand-new video production highlighting the history of Reading from the beginning. brand-new video production highlighting the history of Reading from the beginning right up to present day. There will be an illumination. The trees on the Common will be lit on the 31st, and they will stay lit every night for the two weeks of the celebration. So people driving through town will know something special is happening, because the trees will be all, there will be live music. We have one or two other surprises up our sleeve, but I'm not going to reveal them tonight, but you definitely want to be there. Following that event on the Common, downtown Reading is throwing open its doors. There will be, I believe we decided on purple balloons, probably. There'll be purple balloons outside of restaurants, local businesses, churches, and local organizations that are participating. I could spend the next half an hour going through the list, so I can't tell you all of them. They will be listed on the website, so you can go to the website and see everyone who's participating. Just to give you a flavor, we have an organization sponsoring a make-your-own-sundae bar. We have an organization, a local business sponsoring a wine tasting. And several of our local restaurants are offering discounts and specials for anyone wearing Reading 375 gear. And I do appreciate several of you wearing pins, so thank you for that. So that will all be available on the website. I would like to acknowledge that James Bonizoli, Paula Perry, and Sheila Mulroy have spearheaded and organized what is a very massive opening ceremony. So I'd like to recognize them. And I believe Virginia Adams is here this evening and has been instrumental in putting together that video presentation that will be on the Jumbotron. So we're very grateful for her engagement. The next day, Saturday, June 1st, there will be a concert for Reading at the Reading Memorial High School Performing Arts Center at 3:00 PM. The tickets for this are free. It is a free event. However, you do need a ticket to attend. Tickets will be available at RCTV Studio on Main Street. This concert features the Reading Community Singers under the leadership of Beth Mojer, the Reading Symphony Orchestra under the direction of George Ogata. Bob Beckman and Marlene Wolf have been huge in organizing all the logistics to make this concert happen. And I'm delighted to say that the producer of this concert is William Enslo. You might know him as the man the Performing Arts Center is named after. So having him produce a concert for the town is just unbelievable. It's going to be a beautiful afternoon of music and a celebration of our community. Over the two-week period, there will be an event called Paint the Town. I'm delighted to inform the Select Board and the public that we've had more than 30 original works of art submitted by local artists, each one inspired by the town of Reading. They will be displayed at venues all across town. Again, the venues, the artwork, and the artists will all be listed on the website, so you can see where to go to see it. And there will be a reception for Paint the Town on Wednesday, June 5th at 3:00 PM at the Senior Center. Jane Burns and Eileen Barrett have really spearheaded the promotion and the organization to make Paint the Town happen. Saturday, June 8th, kind of the midpoint of the two weeks, there's a lot going on that day. It starts in the morning at the Reading Public Library from 10:00 to 1:00. They will be hosting Our Town, Your Story. The way it works is this, you bring in up to three photographs. They could be of your home, they could be of your family right now, they could be, we have a lot of people in town with long history and have great historic photos of Reading, whatever you choose. They will scan them into the library's virtual collection, and you have the option to create a little video where you describe why these photos are important. The idea behind this event is to create a legacy for this moment in Reading's history, so that when there's the 400th and 405th anniversary celebration, they can look back to us and see our photos and our stories and our families and what Reading looked like in 2019. It's a wonderful event, and we're very grateful to Amy Lannan, the Library Director, and all the staff at the library who have organized that. One of our signature events also happens on June 8th. It's Porch Fest. This exists to communities all surrounding us. We've never done it in Reading. We're doing it for the first time this year. There will be live music playing on front yards, driveways, and porches all over Reading. I'm delighted to share that more than 30 bands have already signed up. So as you walk around Reading that afternoon, you're just going to hear bluegrass, punk, classic rock. We have banjos. It's going to be amazing. It's going to be fantastic. And that's completely free to the public. Alan Ace and Amanda, who couldn't be here tonight, the Folds, really made that happen. They worked with other communities to find out how they make it work, and they brought it here, and they've had a tremendous response. Also on that weekend, if you're interested in really diving down into the history of Reading, you're going to want to spend some time at the Parker Tavern. On Friday, 7th, in the evening, there's an event called Tavern at the Tavern. There will be period music and period libations. I think of it as sort of partying like they did hundreds of years ago in the oldest building in our community that dates back to the 1600s. On Saturday, June 8th, you can go to Washington Park and actually witness a vintage baseball game. My understanding is the teams will be wearing the uniforms and using the equipment that they would have used in the 1800s. It's an opportunity to see baseball the way it looked over 100 years ago. So that'll be great. If at that event, you're feeling like you need a refreshment, you can head over to Parker Tavern, where they will be hosting Clubhouse at the Tavern and offering baseball field refreshments. That night, Parker Tavern throws open its doors again for our final event of the weekend, Revelry at the Tavern. There will be cocktails, music, and entertainment in our town's oldest building. We want to recognize Stephanie Johnson, Kathy Crook, Diane Wilson. I don't think any of them are here tonight.
Stephanie's here.
Stephanie! I'm so glad you made it. You've just done an enormous amount, that's a lot of logistics to work out, and you guys have worked tirelessly to create what will be a very special weekend at Parker Tavern for the whole community and all the friends at Parker Tavern, obviously. On Monday, June 10th, will be Charter Day. That's the official birthday of Reading. We're still working on details on that? There's only one thing we know for sure, cake. There will be a birthday cake for Reading on Monday, June 10th. Details to be determined on the website. On Wednesday, June 12th, we have our sort of signature culinary event. We're delighted that the Reading Rotary has moved their annual taste of Metro North, which I'm sure a lot of you have attended in the past. It's a fun event. You buy a ticket, you go into the field house at the high school, and there are tons and tons of our local restaurants giving away samples of their food. So you can really make a night of it. It's a fabulous event. The Reading Rotary always hosts this later in the year, but they specifically moved it to this date to be part of Reading 375. Tim Kelly is with us tonight representing the Reading Rotary, so we're delighted to have their partnership. On Saturday, June 15th, it's the grand finale. So this is the end of the two-week period. We have events from morning till night. It starts with the Kids Fun Run, which is the Friends of Reading Rec Annual Fun Run at the high school track in the morning. It's followed by Friends and Family Day, the Reading Lions Club Friends and Family Day Event at the Birch Meadow Fields from 10:30 to 3:00. I'm sure this is another event that you all go to every year. My understanding from the Lions, that we've worked, Lions Club, they get year-over-year bigger attendance, and they are anticipating this being the biggest year yet. There will be food, games, giveaways, entertainment. I can tell you from personal experience, you can go for the full hours and not see, the full four hours and not see all of it. It's just a wonderful event. And we've been working with Sharon Thomas, Lorraine Berry, Joanna Crowley, and Joe Thomas have been our liaisons from the Lions Club, and I'm delighted that Joe was able to join us tonight to represent the Lions Club. I love that you found something purple and Lions. Like hitting every button. Also, if during this event, you found yourself thinking, "I would love to see Reading from the bird's-eye view," I'm delighted to tell you that we will have hot air balloon rides, courtesy of RE/MAX Encore. And Karen Herrick is here tonight wearing her T-shirt. She's been instrumental in getting that brought as part of this. I do have to say, it's weather permitting. But weather permitting, you can get up in a hot air balloon ride and take a little tethered ride up above the skyline and get a different view of Reading. So we're really excited about that. At 2:30 that day at the Wood End, when you're done with all of that, head over to Wood End and bring your dog. We're having the first-ever Reading 375 Dog Parade. It's the biggest gathering of kittens in Reading's history. It's a wonderful way to celebrate what for a lot of us is one of the most important parts of our family that sometimes get overlooked, but not this year. We're going to make sure that our dogs are highlighted and have an event just for them. I'd like to thank Marcel DeBois. Marcel DeBois, I'm sorry, who's here tonight. I'm talking too fast now.
You can pause for a second. Take a breath, June.
Marcel organized the dog parade. And again, the logistics around that are not simple. That's a lot of work to make that happen. This is an event that requires registration, so you've got to go to reading375.com to register your dog to participate. Late that afternoon, there will be a concert back at Birch Meadow, featuring the Reading Community Concert Band, the North Shoreman Barbershop Chorus as well. Again, we're concerned about food. We always want to make sure you're eating. So if, as you're contemplating that music, you find yourself hungry, there will be a food truck event with all variety of food trucks, everything from savory to sweet. Kathy Spur organized all of that and made it happen for us. And the celebration will end the way only any celebration should end, with fireworks, courtesy of the Friends of Reading Recreation and Peter Commodores and his whole crew. So we're very grateful to them for providing fireworks that will end the two-week celebration. I would like to highlight three events that are happening throughout the two weeks. So those were all sort of happening on certain days. If This House Could Talk will happen over the two-week period. How this works is, the idea behind it is every one of our homes and businesses has something special about it. It doesn't have to be historically significant. It doesn't have to be a famous person, select or lived here. It can be what's special about your home to you, why you moved there, a renovation that you did, anything about, any people who've lived there, the people who lived there before you. We provide a custom sign. You type up three or four sentences. That's it. Just this little tidbit about your house. On May 31st, you put the lawn sign in your lawn. It stays there for the two-week, two-week period. And that way, as people are enjoying Porch Fest and enjoying Art Walk and enjoying all the activities, they're going to see these signs and pause and read the little thing about that building. It's a way to share our stories and to celebrate our stories and what makes our home special. I'm delighted that more than 50 homes and businesses have already signed up, but we have more signs available. And this is something anyone could do. It's a fairly easy way to participate. Sarah Brucolaccio and Diane Wilson spearheaded and made this happen. And I think you were inspired by other communities. This is something that happens in other towns, and you thought you'd bring it to Reading. Fantastic. We have a brand-new book published by local authors that celebrates the history of Reading. Images of America: Reading is by local authors Ginny and Everett Logit, who are here this evening. It's a one-of-a-kind book, a beautiful gift for anyone who cares about this town. It is on sale beginning Monday, Monday. And you can come meet the authors and get your own copy on the very first day it's available to the public on Monday, May 13th at RCTV Studios, where they're having a kickoff event. All the details are on the website. Last one. So during the two-week period, if you are a little bit competitive and you want to have a little fun, there is going to be an app-based scavenger hunt, a Reading 375 app-based scavenger hunt. You download the app for free. The game opens up on the 31st. You can't cheat and get the hints ahead of time. You've got to wait until the 31st, the game begins, and you begin to participate. There are challenges and activities that you do, a lot of them centered around Reading 375 activities. And you earn points. The more challenges you do, the more points you earn over the two-week period. This is sponsored by the Reading Cooperative Bank, and Crystal Hodson has been their representative, who's really done all the work on the technology and the app to make sure it's ready to go. It's going to be a really fun way to enjoy the festivities. They're also providing $1,500 in prizes. So there will be a prize for first, second, and third place, but also prizes for categories like Best Demonstration of Reading Pride and Best Family Photo and Best in Show Dog Photo. So they really, it's going to be a lot of fun. So I encourage you to download the app and play the game. I did want to mention that Laura Wilson, a local resident, has just signed on to our team to manage our volunteers, more than, well, more than 100, almost 200 folks? Somewhere in the neighborhood of 200 folks in Reading have signed on to the website to be volunteers during the two-week period. Obviously, someone needs to corral that energy and that talent. Laura signed up to do that, so we're grateful to her. Is there anyone in the room, I'm worried I missed somebody from Reading 375? Is that everybody? A ton of the folks who I mentioned wanted to be here, just couldn't, so they send their best. So I hope you can appreciate the enormous amount of work and the enormous number of individuals who are involved in making this happen for our town. I do have a request. At this point, we would really love your support. The Select Board, as the highest elected board in this community, you have big voices. So to the extent that you can email everyone you know in Reading, wear your buttons around town, wear your T-shirts around town. Email the folks you know in the community with a link to the website. "I'm looking forward to our town's anniversary celebration. The details are here." It can be two sentences long, but just spread the word in that way. We're doing a lot on social media. If you just took a picture of yourself and posted it and said, "Looking forward to our anniversary celebration" with a link to the website, that'd be great. Most importantly, we want you at these events. We hope that you'll join us to celebrate our town's history, what a beautiful place it is to live, how excited we are about the future. And when you do, again, post to social media and hashtag Reading 375. Didn't do 10 minutes.
Need me at all.
Sweet. Ginny?
Thank you so much for that wonderful presentation. And I want to thank all the volunteers here and at home. This is a massive undertaking. It's going to be an amazing series of events. I'm really looking forward to it. My kids know about it. So thank you all so much for all you're doing to help make this fabulous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. So why don't we take just a five-minute break, Bob, before we jump into the next agenda item?
Yep.
All right. So... ............................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................. Okay, Bob, I'm going to hand it over to you for the MWR.
Okay, thanks. We're going to have to defer that to your next meeting. There's a legal requirement when town meeting ends and we went a little too long to get that tonight.
Okay, great.
So we aren't doing...
So you won't be doing the MWR. You will be doing it next week.
Okay.
I'm sorry, next meeting on the 21st.
So the next agenda item is we are being asked to approve the notice of intent, or is it mallet? Is that, is it maillet or mallet?
Yes.
Mallet.
Mallet. Oh, so you could opt in for it quick. All right. Mallet. And this is, this means that we, as the owners of the land, are allowing the review process to begin with the Conservation Committee. So Bob, is that beyond the motion? Is there any explanation?
No, this, this folks here, including Kim, that can certainly answer any questions, but this is the start of what is meant to be a public process. You have to formally approve this NOI in order for the advertising to begin, if you will.
Does it end in a transfer?
I don't believe so. Just, what's the end result? It's not end to end transfer.
No, that's a completely different issue that we hope you'll take up at a later time. This is the Trails Committee applying to the Conservation Commission to have a public hearing to discuss whether this trail project should go forward and under what conditions, basically what wetlands conditions. We need the signature of the property owner and since Select Board controls one of the three parcels that the trail are involved, the trail building project, which is a part of it. The other two parcels are controlled by the Conservation Commission, but they typically would sign an application to themselves. So they defer to Bob, who then defer to you, since you control, as I said, one of the three parcels.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right, so Mark, the Secretary, could I ask you to read the first motion?
Move to approve the filing of a notice of intent for the Trails Committee to be sent to the Mass Department of Environmental Protection and the Reading Conservation Commission concerning proposed work in the Mallet Conservation Area. This notice of intent requires a public hearing and notification of a butters within 300 feet.
Any further discussion?
I just had one, one question. I thought we previously handed over control of this property to the Conservation Commission.
That's true, but this is a project as a whole that's come under some scrutiny by the Select Board and by the, by the butters. And this just seemed the clean way of doing it. We didn't want to presume too much. At the end of this process, if we would just make sure that we know who's going to sign this.
Yes.
Perfectly tomorrow or by midday on Thursday.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. With the Board's permission, I'd be happy to sign this on your behalf.
You have our stamps anyway.
Yeah. Not all of them.
Oh.
Great. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Great.
Okay, thank you.
So Bob?
All set.
Do you have sufficient signatures for this?
I do.
Okay, great. So next up, we have a presentation from the RMLD General Manager, Colleen O'Brien. So there will be no vote for this. There are topics of interest that come up that we want to explore further. We can discuss adding them to a future agenda. So I will hand it over to Colleen.
So we're just listening.
We're just listening. Send me two questions.
Is this the...
It's okay.
You can hear. Okay. Thanks for having us. Good evening. I was asked by the RMLD liaison to provide an RMLD overview. The slide deck, which Bob can send you, contains much information for your reference. To keep the presentation within our allotted timeframe though, my senior management team will kind of touch just on the highlights of each of the slides, but then Bob sends it to you, you can look at the rest for reference. I'd also like to just take a second to let you know that while we are not 375 years old, we are 125 years old this year. So May 21st is our anniversary and we'll be posting a historical short video that Joyce has put together. And then in October 10th, as part of the National Public Power Week, when we have our open house, we'll probably have a small reception after the open house that everyone will be invited to. And probably we have a board meeting that, that night as well. So we look forward to that and, and I, we'll coordinate with, maybe even try to do something with the 375. So with that, I'd like to introduce some of my management team that's here. Integrated Resources Director Chuck Underhill at the back, Business Finance and Utility Technology Director Wendy Makowitz, Assistant Utility Technology Director Ronnie Holzer, and Director of Engineering and Operations Hameed Jafar. So I'm going to take control of the space station here and Chuck's up next.
Hopefully, me being a chair doesn't violate protocols.
I think you're okay.
So as Colleen said, I'm the Integrated Resources Director. I have been with RMLD for the last six months, an extremely long tenure. Prior to that, I spent 10 years with Danvers Electric, learning how municipal utilities in Massachusetts work. And 25 years prior to that, I worked for the Vermont Municipal Utilities. So I'm kind of here to explain what it is the resources division does. We manage the power supply portfolio. We are the liaison with ISO New England, which is the wholesale market in northeast, in New England. So I manage the market, I manage our contract resources, and I handle our forecasting and budgeting processes. I'm also responsible for the design of retail rates. And as a subset of that, I'm responsible for working with key accounts and customer service and also working on load management activities, which includes energy efficiency and all that information. So I was asked to define a kilowatt hour. And I'm not sure exactly what context to, to put that in, so I came up with a car analogy. And basically, a kilowatt is 1,000 watts. That should clarify everything for everyone. Absent that, it's .001 megawatts. Megawatts are the units that we deal with in the wholesale market. But if you're driving a car, it's equivalent to miles per hour. So if you're going down the road, you will drive at various speeds over time. And a kilowatt hour is, from beginning to end of the journey, the amount of distance that you've traveled or the amount of energy that you've actually used. So a kilowatt hour costs roughly 15 cents. It'll power a 60-watt incandescent bulb for 16 and a half hours. Or, and because I know you've already switched, it will power a 13-watt LED bulb, the equivalent of a 60-watt bulb, for 77 hours. You decide the value. Below that is a chart that kind of breaks down the typical residential usage excluding electric heat. This is our resource portfolio.
Could you just go back to that previous slide for one second?
Sure.
Thanks.
Oh.
Good. I just wanted to, I wasn't able to read this slide.
Okay. So this is our resource portfolio for the 12 months ending June 30th, 2018. And this has a breakdown of all of our resources in it. We have a couple of nuclear contracts, which are non-carbon emitting. We have solar projects that are actually on our system. We have hydro projects that we have included, and we have some wind projects that we've got there. So this is sort of our non-carbon footprint right here, and it's growing. The yellow section is what we buy in the open market. We try and keep that between 5 and 20% depending on pricing we can lock in and our risk portfolio. The rest is bilateral contracts. And this is almost the same chart. I had trouble lining them up because we now work on a calendar here. But what this chart shows is each month, how much each of our contract resources contributes to our portfolio. And it changes over time. One of the easiest ones to see is hydro. And you can see that we've got moderate amount in January, springtime usage is very high, summertime usage, there's no rain, there's no waterfall, so hydro is down. And we can tell a story about virtually all of the contracts that we have. Next, please. So the biggest effort that we put forth is in managing our customer-facing programs: energy efficiency, electrification, and distributed generation. Distributed generation, we have two power purchase agreements with solar farms, solar collectives here in RMLD. It is where retail customers get to participate in the program. I'm not sure how many of you participate. Okay. So we have those. Those are directly connected to the grid. They're about 4 and 1/2 megawatts. We have our peak management programs. They're all under the Shred the Peak umbrella. We have a battery energy storage system, 5 megawatts that will be coming on right around the 1st of June this year. We have a natural gas generator that's been online for about a year and a half now. That's another 2 and 1/2 megawatts. And then we have residential and commercial Shred the Peak programs, where we call out alerts when it's going to be a peak event and customers do what they can to conserve against the peak. We offer residential and commercial audits and rebates. We have an online product store. I don't know if any of you have purchased anything from EFI. We are updating the offerings there. And we've started electrification program for the last five or six years. RMLD has seen a decline in its retail sales. And the electrification program accomplishes two things. One, it grows load. And two, it grows the load using non-carbon resources. So if our EV program takes gas-powered vehicle off the road and puts an electric vehicle on, we also buy non-carbon generation to fuel the recharging of the electric vehicle, at least in our territory. Can't guarantee if somebody takes it out. So that's kind of what we're doing on the retail side. Colleen? We are engaging in an EV program of study to figure out what we want to do next with the program. We have a number of options for developing charging infrastructure out in the community, residential, commercial, and we're making sure that we cover all four RMLD communities. We have committed to non-carbon resource offset acquisition. So if we build load, we're getting non-carbon resources. We're currently working with the legislature on an acceptable program for us to mirror the renewable portfolio standard commitments of the IOUs. We're developing our EV customer base. We've got a big campaign going, which we're trying to get pulled into place for the summer. We have off-peak load management, which includes time of use rates and credits for charging off-peak with your electric vehicle. And we're tracking EV technology developments. It's another rapidly escalating product out there. So we're going to start working with planning and zoning commissions on EV charging stations and putting regulations in place where over five units in a residential complex would require the installation of EV charging. We're looking at funding grants through Mass Grants, Regi and VW funding, Regi and VW funding. If we can pull it off, it'd be a coordinated activity with green communities. So we have rebate programs. We're monitoring and tracking what's going on so that we can continue to upgrade our program. We will then establish growth goals for the programs and KPIs, key performance indicators, to be able to measure those. And we're integrating our programs into the forecast and the budget view. This next slide is challenging to look at, but I don't want you to read the individual lines. This is a residential electric bill. It has three sections on it: last month's activity, the current bill, and then the summary. So if you look, you'll see that the billed amount was $59.85. The customer paid $55 and got the $4 prompt payment discount. So the balance owed is zero. Coming here to current charges, we broke this apart a couple of years ago because people were calling in, comparing what was going on on our national grid bill and how that was broken out with our one line, this is high, pass this amount. And so it's broken out. There are essentially two sections on the bill. This piece relates to the charges for RMLD, or this is our poles and wires portion of the business, accounting, billing, and miscellaneous administrative. And then we have the market charges identified, so people can see what the market power actually costs them. And then this last section here is simply the amount that's going to be due this month. And this will then appear up here on the next month, with or without the credit, depending on if there will be a prompt payment. That's me, I'm done.
So time to fail this test.
Excuse me, before you go, Chuck, can I ask you a couple of quick questions? Hopefully, quick questions. On that very first graph, how much of the purchasing is non-carbon emitting at this point? Is it about a quarter?
Just about a quarter. We, it was probably about 22%. We just signed an agreement. The power started flowing April 1st for 3% of our load. So we're at 25% non-carbon emitting resources.
Great. You talked about some of the programs for electric vehicles. Is there any discussion about an opportunity for town vehicles at some point?
Yes. We have just put our new rebate program in place. We presented it to the commission this evening. And town vehicles are included. Town vehicles are covered under a couple of categories. One is if the town has a vehicle and simply wants to charge it over at either the DPW or Town Hall from a charger. The other would be a fleet. And the fleets that we're looking at in the communities include school buses and whatever else is out there. The SUVs that a lot of departments need come as plug-in hybrids rather than all electrics, but we continue to watch the market on that.
Great. And last question, with all of the new economic development going on around town, all the new construction, do you guys have a program to approach them to get charging stations into those buildings?
We don't quite yet. We're getting the program up and running. As I said, we're going to planning and zoning to work with them on new construction projects for making sure that that's just a integral part of what goes on. There are a couple of housing projects that we've been working with, one across from the train station. We're talking with them about putting EV charging stations into their parking area. And there is a residential development, the name of which escapes me at the moment, that we're talking about at least running 240-volt power to the garage so that they can take Tier 2 chargers.
Great. Thank you. Are we gonna, because there's, this spawned a million questions for me. We're going to invite them back? Is that the plan? I thought we were here to listen tonight.
Yeah, we are here to listen. I think, you know, at the end of the night, we have our list of potential future agenda items. I think there's a lot of potential here.
Yeah, I agree.
I would, shortly, yes.
Good.
All right. Thanks, Chuck.
Can I add one thing to that? So currently, there's a residential and commercial EV rebate program that's online. And actually, Chuck and I just finished today updating the commercial one to add a couple of more different cases that we're working on. So those will be up on the website tomorrow. The rest of the things that we have here in this study program is due probably before the summer, at the beginning of the summer, working with the state grants. I mean, there's, there's a lot to it. It's very comprehensive. That's why we have the, you know, the simple charging cases are already on the rebate program on the website. But the rest of it, creating a foundation for, you know, coming in and talking to the town about, you know, here's how a fleet thing would work, because it would be the same for us. Here's what the state is willing to help us with. We have to meet with the state. So we've, we've got a lot of work to do and we're hoping to get at least the basis of it done before the summer. And then we'll be ready to, to talk about specifics.
Okay.
Will you be able to send this presentation to us? Yeah, I have it on.
Yeah. Bob's going to send it over.
Okay, good evening. Again, I'm Wendy Makowitz, and I am the Director of the Business Finance and the Utility Technology Division. Under my direction, it is the responsibility of the accountants to deliver accurate financial statements that are independently audited by Melanson &amp; Heath at this current time and also regulated by the Department of Public Utilities. Also, to my direction, the technology side... Also, to my direction, the technology side is responsible for the implementation and maintenance of the software and the hardware for the entire department. We're also responsible for data analysis through our SQL reporting. And we provide a bridge between operations and IT through our operational technology individuals. And then, of course, we create and deliver the RMLD, to the RMLD customers the bills. So, there's been some questions about how the cash is controlled at the RMLD. So, I just wanted to clarify that the RMLD provides the Town of Reading Accounting Department all the detail regarding each account's payable check and payroll check. The RMLD does not have check writing capabilities at all. That all happens at the Town of Reading level. We also do not have any cash capabilities at a high level. All the wires that go out to our power suppliers and all the wires coming in from our customers are done through the Town of Reading. We communicate with them, they communicate with us, and that's basically how it happens. And we just record it on each other's end, and we reconcile at the end of the day. All the investments for the RMLD are also done through the Town of Reading. And the Town of Reading has, again, the viewing capabilities of all transactions that we do have, the small transactions, $3,500 balance of petty cash, and a $7,500 limit of P-card transactions, which is the purchasing card with the Town of Reading. We have to follow the Town of Reading policies for those. And the counter cash payments that do come in through our customers, on average, is about $1,000 a day. And we also communicate that through what's called a cash turnover worksheet a couple times a week. Okay? So, the financial reporting obligations outside of the independent audit that we go through annually, we also, like I said, are regulated by the Department of Public Utilities. We have to provide an annual return for them. We also report to the ISO, the ISO, which is our power supplier, the Citizens Advisory Board, quarterly financials. We report to the Reading Municipal Light Board monthly. And we also present annual capital and operating budgets. And also, we biannually go through Standard and Poor's financial study to see what our rating is, along with the Town of Reading. So, I thought it was important. There's been some questions in our board meetings. I thought it was important for you to, it's hard to read right now, but if you actually look at it later, you get an understanding of the flow chart of what it actually takes for an invoice to come in the door and get out with a paycheck to the vendor, and how many levels of approval that it actually goes through. And the invoices, like I said, every invoice is copied and sent to the Town of Reading. So, the Town of Reading has complete viewing capability before they cut that check to make sure there's no fraudulent activity happening. Okay? So, then, I also want to talk about the payroll. The payroll, same thing. It's a very intricate process. It's, there are different divisions within the department that, some of them work on a work order basis, some of us are office individuals. So, we record our time differently. So, there are three different ways of recording time. Again, we reconcile that. The accounting department reconciles that through the payroll system with the time sheets. Time sheets are thoroughly checked by the supervisor, then by the division manager. And once again, the warrant is developed after a signature from the general manager, the board commissioners. Everything comes through the Town of Reading. So, I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. You saved the best for last.
Yeah. And the most humble.
Right. Well, good evening. I'm Hamid Jafari, Director of Engineering and Operations, and I'm responsible for keeping lights on, basically. So, if you see me doing this, or running like a chicken with its head cut off, that's me, you know? So, trying to keep the light on. So, okay, as you know, we are the largest municipal utility in the state. We cover in four towns, Wilmington, North Reading, and half the Lynnfield. We have transmission, subtransmission, and distribution facilities, as well as we have distributed generation, two and a half megawatts at North Reading at Substation 3. I'm in charge of basically electric system reliability standards and regulatory compliances. These are the compliances, the regulatory compliances that we have to come forth under. I'm responsible for all of these groups, engineering line, substation facilities, purchasing, and insurance and liability. So, pretty much covering a lot. This is the new outage management system that we installed last year, and also this year we're testing it. So, we get the GIS data, and we combine that, bring that into the OMS outage management system. What you see over here is the dashboard, and what you see on the left is basically the entire system operation live, that our operators, basically, they get all the, collect all the data information from the outages. So, when you have an outage, we know exactly where it is and what happened and where it is before we get the first call. So, we are very well aware of that. So, this is what you, you don't see that? This is inside, pressure inside the control room that makes us to, you know, restore the outages faster and have a better efficiency.
Two hundred meters.
What is it?
Two hundred meters.
Two hundred meters, right. So, the next, the next slide is gonna show you, this is basically integrating the outage management system with the IVR and AMI. What happens? When your meter is out, that meter is reported to the outage management system. And in the outage management system, you're gonna have to, you're gonna see these red dots, or maybe, you know, shows that, you know, basically a meter is out. And when there is an area outage, you're gonna see that map, basically, on your app. And what happens is AMI is sending the signal to OMS. OMS is gonna integrate that data with the IVR. IVR is an interactive voice response, meaning the customers can, you know, be notified via phone, text, or email, they bought the status of the outage and what the estimated restoration time would be. And this is gonna help us to restore the outages faster and have a lower operational cost, basically. Because when you know where the outage is, you can dispatch it faster, right, than sending trucks all over trying to find the faults on the system. The next one, please.
Campaign.
And also, we're gonna have a campaign to collect the information from the customers, basically, two months ahead of the implementation, which the implementation, that full implementation is gonna be somewhere in fall, probably late fall, but early fall, we're gonna start the campaign of collecting that information from the customers.
Will you do that through the bills?
We're gonna do that from number of, so on the website, we're gonna send the emails. We've got nineteen thousand twenty emails in the system, as well as, I believe, we're gonna do maybe through the bills also. We still have.
I just wonder how you're gonna capture them.
Yeah. We try to reach out as many, also Twitter, where many people, they have, you know, signed up in the Twitter. So, we're gonna have to call a communication manager, who is Chuck, who's responsible for that. They're gonna be starting the campaign, reaching out to as many people as we can in order to get that. It's just marathon. The people could go on the website and also register also these options, whatever you want, all three of them, we can give you all three of them. So, that system is being tested right now, as we speak. So, we're in testing phase. This is the outage management. Could you go to the next one? This is very complicated, the background, this is how the systems are integrated, basically. The customer outage portal that you're gonna see on your mobile phone, cellphone, that would be, or if you have, if you have a computer, that, you know, you could get that map. What you see, the polygon shape, that shows the area outage. And inside, it's gonna tell you about the estimated restoration time, as well as what happened, where the area of, you know, basically, it's not gonna show individual houses that here, just in general. This is saying that, you know, you get from National Grid, the people that, you know, National Window, Evergreen, except this one has a little bit more information on it that, you know, you could talk about. So, the next one is the RMLD OSHA compliances. You know that, you know, RMLD actually started compliance, stands back in 2013 regarding the exemption. This is, we fall under the OSHA as of February 1st, 2019. All the utilities are ordered to comply with the OSHA rules and regulations. So, but we started this back in 2013, and we did a study in September of 2018 to find the deficiencies. We found the minor deficiencies. We came up with a mitigation plan. And also, we set up the OSHA compliance committee in order to enforce the policies and operational procedures, as well as making sure those deficiencies are taken care of over time. They're very, very minor, like 95% we were right on the target, 5% minor stuff that, you know, we need to do in compliance. And now, new Wilmington substation. Wilmington is served, most, majority of Wilmington area is served by Station 5, which is antiquated substation. And that substation is reaching the end of the useful life. So, we're searching for land in Ballard Bear area, Route 125, 93, you know, in that intersection. So, we have targeted a parcel that is right next to National Grid, 115, 89, because it's, because of the distance, the shoulder, it is better, you know, it would cost less to build it. The cost of the substation is gonna, is nine and a half million dollars, and the substation is planned to go online by 2021. And this substation also provides some relief from North Reading and Reading substation. So, once that substation falls down, we're gonna be all set for another 15, 16, I won't be here, but. So, the new site, this is the site, the existing substation in the Wildwood area in Wilmington, and the proposed site is, this is 125, and this is 93, so it would be right close to Handover Street, across the street with Ballard Bear. NER compliance. NER stands for North American Electric Reliability Corporation. This is basically mandated by federal, all the utilities, they're supposed to follow their standards. There're basically the three major standards or compliance areas that they need to follow. One is physical security, cybersecurity, and also their reliability standards, very stringent standards to make sure the utilities, they do what they should in order to maintain the system, so they don't have prolonged outages for the areas and for the customers. And we had a NER audit in 2018. We passed it without any citation, without any problems, you know, the utility passed because we had all the records, all the maintenance records, training, and also inspections that we had done. They were right on target, so, and they were very impressed with the way that, you know, we're doing things. So, kudos to my team. My team really did a great job on that, the whole RMLD team. These are the listed maintenance programs that, you know, we have established in order to make sure we maintain the assets, RMLD assets, as well as, you know, maintaining the reliability to as best as it can be. So, I'm not gonna go through them, there are a ton of them, you know, and we're getting, you know, we, every year, we present a six-year budget for capital authorizations, and then, once the board approves that, then we get to do all of them in pieces. And some of them, they take 10 to 15 years to come, go through the complete cycle, like it's a cyclic program that goes, some goes three years, some goes five years, some 15, and some, you know, 20 years, depending on what category, like the underground developments or so. The last one is the BESS projects. This is basically the battery storage project that we got a grant for $1 million from the state of Mass in June, in last year, and it is expected to go online by June of 2019. Basically, it's a cost-saving method, it's shredding the peak. It stores the energy during the low-cost period, and then, it's gonna release the energy to the system during the high, during the peak hours, and, which is gonna be cost-saving for the customers. We're also gonna help in reducing the carbon footprint, which is a good thing to do. So, we're really excited about that. It's five megawatts, and then, it's supposed to go on like, right now, about 75% it's completed. So, by the end of the month, we're gonna have certainly completed, and it's gonna be ready for June, if we have another system peak like we had two years ago, in June, on June 13. This is a picture that shows, basically, you see over here, it's a generator that was talking about two and a half megawatts at Station 3. And these are, this is the construction, the battery cells and transformers and everything that goes back to the station bus. So, the whole system would benefit from that. Well, that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, for all means.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you all for coming in. This was very informative.
Yeah.
Bob, can we put that presentation under today's calendar entry, so that if people are looking for it, you can find it? It's very informative. Great. So...
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
So, Bob, up next, we have the continued hearing for the new poll at Franklin and Grove.
Oh, yeah. There you are.
But I know you have an update on that. We technically have to open and then...
We've had some citizen, you know, disgruntled citizens around this particular thing. I thought they were sleeping around for that. No.
No, it's, Bob hasn't answered.
Can we run it?
What was that?
Can we run catch-up?
No.
No, 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 that's fine.
Bob's got it covered.
Yeah, so technically, at eight o'clock tonight, your hearing was opened, was reopened, was continued. Our engineering, you've seen some correspondence, our engineering department has worked with RMLD, and there's no disagreement now between the two, so that we're not looking for you to resolve the situation, so you can close the hearing. There's a motion to close it, and a motion to record the reason why. One of the residents that did, Fred, did an email and actually visited, and was very satisfied with the results he got from them. I don't know what the final decision they've made on what to do. I'm not sure if they've made it yet. But it was down to one of two things, and Fred was okay with either one from an email.
But it wasn't the original proposal, because the original proposal seemed...
It was a version.
Not a good, not a good way to solve the problem.
Well, it was a version of that. What they showed our engineers, which they hadn't before, was all the economics and the engineering behind why they had to do what they had to do, as opposed to us trying to testify. They did come up with a couple of alternatives, and again, I don't know which one they picked, but I'm sorry, I don't remember which of you, if any, were on the last email. Maybe it was just the chair, but...
Yeah, it wasn't on.
Okay, I can forward it to you. Fred was satisfied with the two conclusions.
Great. So, unless there's additional questions, it sounds like it's well in hand between the town and RMLD.
And if for some reason it doesn't work out, they'll be back to see you. But we have every reason to think now that staff has worked it out.
Fantastic. So, Mark, could I ask you to read the motion?
Move that the board close the hearing regarding a new poll requested Franklin and Grove streets. Second, yeah?
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I just wanna, you know, when will we know the resolution?
I'll ask tomorrow. I think they were looking at the end of May, but I'll double-check.
I'm just asking, because if we're closing this, then that means we're satisfied. We're satisfied without knowing the answer.
You're relying on the fact that the engineers have represented to me that all the solutions left on the table are satisfactory to the test.
You know, I'm just trying to understand it.
Yeah, and just so you know, on your behalf, the engineers have hearings all the time, not all the time, once in a while, polls and other things. They only come to you when the engineers and the party, in this case, RMLD, can't work it out.
Got it.
Or the driveway hearings, they can't work it out, so they come to you for an exception. So, if, you know, certainly, anyone such as Fred is willing to, is welcome to come to that hearing when the engineers hold it. They had one this morning, tonight, at 6:30 on a different issue. If for some reason he's not satisfied, it may well end up back in your laps.
Okay.
But it's definitely not the original proposal that was the subject of this hearing.
Great. That's funny for me.
So, if the issue was resolved, was ended up, for whatever reason, not being resolved, it could be you in the hearing.
You'd start a new one.
We have to start a new hearing.
Yeah, okay. All right, so I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor? Great. And there's a second motion?
Second motion, yeah. Move that the board take no action as the issue has been resolved, and RMLD will work with the town's engineering division on the matter.
Great. Do I have a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor? Great. So, next up, we have reviewing the town manager's goals. So, we're, just take a look at the time.
The time, okay. I have nine minutes.
We've allocated half an hour for this. I don't think Bob needs quite that much time to go through all of them. I thought he could give us an update, just for those of you that are new, and then we could leave it open for questions.
Yeah, and I think, once you do the next agenda item or one of the next ones, and have liaisons assigned to projects, that's where I can really get into more detail with one or two members on, in a number of these. So, I'll try to hit these kind of at a high level.
Great.
And I do understand there's two new members, so I'll try to differentiate between, you know, what you may not have heard. I think you're pretty well familiar with the elementary school space needs that was reported at a town meeting. The senior slash community center is really not changed from February, March or so. There was a presentation in front of this board from a fellow from the state that, basically, my summary was, the seniors and the kids don't want to be in the same place. There are other communities exploring that, we'll see. I had a meeting on Monday, and again, depending on which of you is a liaison, I'm happy to go into a little more detail about some opportunities within the town. There still does need to be a focus group or a focal group to head this project. The council and aging was asked and did not have interest in leading it, but they certainly had interest in participating. had interest in participating in it. Again, when you have liaisons, you can discuss whether senior slash community center is one or two topics. It's just put there for simplicity as as an idea. Just to say this outline because we've discussed that at school meeting meetings, if you're going to bring in an educational component, so you remember a few years back, the early education center that the schools had discussed, it's it's pretty much impossible to have an early educational component and something else combined for security reasons. The educational piece has to be significantly different and secure for the children. If you're going to combine it with a senior center, you might imagine that the hours are offsetting, but that does not remove the requirement for security for the students. So you couldn't have the seniors where the kids are during the day, for instance. But if it's a community center, you could. So to the extent there's two populations with offsetting demands on time, for instance, you could do that. But just to be clear, for formal public education, that's really a non-starter for this topic. It's a super tank.
Isn't that completely separate?
Well, it shouldn't be. There has been discussion in the community about combining them, I just wanted to say that aloud.
Yeah, I mean, that that was pretty clear when we went through through this exercise four or five years ago.
Yeah.
That it had to be a standalone, which really kind of disappears from your radar to me.
Right, yeah, effectively, right.
Wait, just to the extent that it's early education, as you differentiated right.
Right.
But if it were community.
Right.
And not educational specifically, but community focused, that that's a different opportunity.
Yeah, that remains to be seen whether it's, I mean, the whole idea of a community center has different populations.
Right.
Not one of them is early childhood education.
Right.
I mean, you know, there could be multiple groups being served in the, under the broad category, you know, community center, but.
Okay. Shortly, you'll see some new banners going up and some new parking and wayfinding signs in the downtown. Hopefully you'll notice that's the point of them being there. We're just about finished that part of the project as soon as they're put up, which again will be pretty obvious, you'll see them. We're also going to do some of the parking signs with the wayfinding branding. We have to be really careful if it's a regulatory sign, it has to be red and white, green and white, or blue and white, depending on what type of regulation it is. In order for us to give someone a ticket, we have to follow certain protocol. But for other signs in terms of, hey, there's a parking lot back there, that's not regulatory, that's just telling you there's a parking lot, that's where you see the branding efforts. And there's some really, what I think is some really attractive banners that'll be going up primarily on Haven Street. If, you know, you look up, you'll see them on the polls, the polls that are ready to have them, we decided to go with those. Few, if any, will go on Main Street because the polls aren't ready for that, they're not designed for that. We could change them in the future, but we wanted to sort of see how this looked. I think it'll look nice. The long-term planning, we had another conference call yesterday with the consultant. Again, I want to talk to two liaisons about this. Part of this is certainly the Walkers Brook area, but honestly, it's all the way from Main Street all the way down to Wakefield on the Walkers Brook. It's not just the DPW side, it's the whole thing. So we want to have a pretty detailed discussion before anything is brought back to the full board. Sometime last fall, the master plan update is CPDC's purview, if you will, and they said no, they had too many other things to do. They said they'd look at it again in the future. Let's see, anything else that we're not done? Seven and eight are just ongoing. Amy and Laura are doing a good job on some archival work. When they're finished, well, let it be finished, when they're further along, they'll probably come in and want to give you an update. Community events, you saw tonight, a number of them, the town is involved in many, but not all of those events. All the finance was concluded before. Both finance and DPW have policies now into town council, and if he should ever be able to pry himself loose from the other towns' town meetings, then he'll be able to do some work on things like that. You saw the work on the building security study and the building security issue. I would say this is now 100% done in terms of building security study and now there's next steps that we'll have to talk about for FY '20. The general bylaw review completed, you could see the gender neutral in the cleanup at town meeting. Chief Burns did a phenomenal job on a comprehensive emergency plan, it's literally this thick. So if anyone wants to read it sometime.
Can I just say that, I don't know if you guys get a chance to read the thing that Chief Burns puts out, it's.
Twink.
It's really not just fire department related.
No.
Matter of fact, it's comprehensive in that regard.
Yeah.
It's, I mean, when I first started looking at it, I was like, how come we're talking about all this other stuff? And then I realized that he's really our emergency management guy. So that's a great read. He, I mean.
Yeah, it's very comprehensive.
He puts it out, is it every week or every other?
Every week.
I think it's every week. We get a lot of email, but.
Yeah.
That's why I stopped to read all the time. It really is exceptional from an information standpoint.
Third or fourth week of May, there's a called an REPC, a Regional Emergency Planning Committee. Reading is participates, we go to Wakefield for a meeting, there's about 35 communities. You know, the joke is if there's an emergency in the area, Reading has to be in charge.
I've actually attended some.
You've been over those.
And they are, they do look.
And we show up.
Something comes up, they turn around and look at Burns or, you know.
Yeah, and there's some very qualified and very talented people in the room. But other towns normally show up with one, two, or maybe three people and we come with 10 to 15 because we work as a group, we travel as a group. And it's it's places like the Reading Housing Authority, it's just a wide range of community One or two meetings ago, I wrote up that I wanted to discuss the personnel policies. I can hit a little of that tonight, but I'd rather do it with a liaison. As you might imagine, the hiring market is very tight right now, it's very tough. I've said to the board in the past that we've hired people that have never shown up as an example, not the way I was raised, but that's happened. It's a complicated area. Pay is certainly a factor, but is by no means the only factor in today's hiring decision. So I've really, after a discussion with the department heads, I've really decided I had to take this on personally and not just at a distance and I had to be responsible for every word in the personnel policies once it's redone. So I will do that and I would like to push that into next year to complete. And it goes hand in hand with the next one, employee retention. Customer service training, we're just about done. I'm still not doing a particularly good job myself, but I'm reminded almost daily with an email, something calls it candidate, candidate training, we've signed up for a lot of electronic training. And I've heard from some of my colleagues that it's very good. In addition, we've had a number of required in-person seminars over at the police station and the community room. And it's a wide range of topics. You know, if you really stop and think about, for instance, you can look through the budget and see all the different things we do as an organization and all the different kinds of people we have that work here. And then all the kinds, all the different kinds of, you know, personal relationships they have with different parts of the community. It's really, one thing doesn't always fit all, I guess is what I'm saying. So that what public might works might emphasize wouldn't necessarily work at the library and vice versa. So it's a somewhat complex organization. But we've generally made really good progress in our goals with one or two exceptions, maybe. This Thursday, we're having a department head, an assistant department head meeting and we're actually starting with rainstorm, about FY '20 goals. That's also something I'd like to have a discussion. There was different discussions over the last year about more goals, less goals. I'd really like to spend, personally, I'd like to spend more time on very important goals rather than having a lot of goals, we just check a box. But I can't necessarily decide those goals, I'm certainly going to need your help. So we'll start at the department head.
It gets too long, we really need to.
Well, I don't, you know, my predecessor, with all due respect, liked to check the box and liked lists. And that's okay, and that's not ineffective. I think we're at a point in the community, especially with an override having passed, that we really take a hard look at ourselves and decide what are the two or three things we really want to do. And those two or three things probably can't be done in a year and really might need a lot of different inputs, for instance. So, you know, we'll see what department heads and assistants come up with Thursday. Plus, we've done a lot of housecleaning, if you will, we've updated our policies as it is. So we're in pretty good shape. I still have to do some town manager work, but we're in pretty good shape. So probably on a June or July agenda, it doesn't really matter, we'll want another discussion, a preliminary goals discussion. And I'd really, again, like your feedback. And if we could finalize those probably by August, September, that would be helpful. The way our schedules work as a staff, you know, some of us are different, but generally speaking, we do a lot of work actually in the summer and the early part of the fall on goals. Because we're not yet preparing for a town meeting and the various other things that happen during the year. So it's really helpful to have some guidance sooner than later.
Okay.
Again, through the liaison process or really for any process you'd like, if you ever have questions on any of these, I'm happy to answer them, either in person, on the phone, or an email, whichever is most appropriate. I've met with some of you personally, I still owe you a meeting, I know.
That's okay. We'll get it done. We'll do it.
But again, the door's open, not always there, but the door's open. I do look forward to your liaison assignments because I just know there's a bunch of things I'd like to talk to you about as, you know, one or two people.
Thank you, Bob. So we're doing well on time, thank you, Bob, for the brevity. Why don't we take, if we have 10 minutes, to ask Bob some questions and we can also put this on the agenda going forward if the discussion goes beyond that.
I just had a question to clarify something in the retention, you described some sort of reorganization based on what the library has done? If I read that correctly?
Let me see what I wrote. I mean, what the library did was reorganize their department.
Correct.
Just to take a look quick. Oh, so she was working with Jean to see if Jean needed to do some or any of that with some vacant positions, is always an opportunity to look. That's as an example.
And how does that go to employee retention? I'm just not making a connection.
Well, it depends how you do it, but the library's model and the one Jean has used is involved every employee in terms of what is our department good at, what does it need to improve at? Are we using you effectively? Are we giving you the right tools? So things like.
Right, okay, thanks.
Mark?
Question on capital planning, is it a, where it's 100% complete, are you looking at that as an annual activity or? Okay, I think it might be valuable, but as we do a long-term capital plan already, maybe be thinking about that as more of an ongoing as well as the annual.
Yeah, it's, I'm certainly open to whatever the board wants as a role, but as I said in the bunch of processes, I think the next 12 months are critical in capital in terms of priorities. There's some, you know, unfundable things, if you will, and we don't want people to be surprised about the library and then override. We want to make sure we lay things out there clearly for all. That's where we'll need the most help, the nuts and bolts of capital is kind of generally, you can see the capital plan, it takes care of itself.
Any other questions?
I have two. One goes to, I think, a couple of overlap between the goals, one being long-term planning on economic development and the other employee retention slash personnel. I was just wondering, an update on an economic development director and hiring or interviews or how things are going there?
Think of what I can say. An offer is forthcoming.
Okay.
We found an excellent candidate and hope they're not listening now, so the price goes up. I was really very, very happy at the last set of interviews we had. And I'm very hopeful that by our next meeting, we'll have some good news.
And the second question is around customer service training. I know that you have a lot of demands on your time and haven't been able to participate in the online-based training, but I was wondering if you if you attend the the training in person that's that's led by HR?
Yeah, yeah.
Thanks.
That was required.
Great, I just wanted to clarify, thank you.
And it was good, one of them was especially good because it was led by our labor council.
Okay.
I'm one of the few employees that knows them really well and it was really nice to see all the employees interacting well. It was very well done, very well received.
Very good, thank you.
Well, to to play off of something you said a few minutes ago, Bob, when I look at a list of 21 things and I look at those 21 things, I find probably at least half of them, it's you supervising people doing the work. You know, to me, that's, it's got to get done.
Yeah.
But it's kind of, you know, I'd like to support what you're talking about and that is to put a lot more time in a lot fewer categories. I know you're managing those people because the work's getting done. But when we think about it in terms of, is it a goal or is it?
Yeah.
To me, I, you know, look, that stuff surfaces when it doesn't get done.
Right.
And, you know, and you're accountable for that. I mean, you know, you're, matter of fact, you know, you're accountable to us and we're only looking at you. So, I mean, I see so many of those things as things that you just do on a day-to-day basis as part of your CEO job here and, you know. And I would really like us to work closely as liaisons roll out, you know, pick a hand, a small handful of things that can have far-reaching effect in beyond beyond a year.
Yeah.
I really think that, I want to endorse that line of thinking from my perspective, so.
Things with DPW and finance department policies, you know, they're not complicated, but actually you own most of those, they're in your policies.
Right.
So they're doing the legwork, but it's actually going to come to you. So that that's a sneaky one that actually is important. Almost anything with the word policy next to it is is yours in one in one way or another, whereas hiring a DPW director, well, I better just do that. So I'm happy to do whatever you like along those lines, but I do think, and this, we discussed this over the winter, multi-year goals are very worth talking about, just because you can't do it in a year doesn't mean you don't think about it, I talk about it, I work on it. And that the the fine line between town manager goals and select board goals can be blurry. There's no reason it has to be totally separate. We each have a role in some of these efforts.
All right, if there's no other discussion, why don't we take a five-minute break before we jump into liaison assignments? into liaison assignments? So, let's get started. All right, so now we have the Select Board Liaison Assignments. These are done annually. Some only have one liaison, some have two due to the heavy load of that particular board committee or commission's meeting schedule. So this year, we were each asked to rank these from 1 to 30-some-odd. Some of us only did 1 through 10. I think that's fine. I took the liberty of going through and sort of loosely trying to put this together. I know Andy did something similar. I don't know if the rest of you have gone through the very fun exercise, but, well, the way I broke it down was I tried to have everyone have the majority of their top five, and if not possible, then the majority of their top 10. The one thing I would comment on is last year I was the liaison, and so it's buried to both CPDC and ZBA. Those, depending on what is happening, can be intensive, and my recommendation from my experience this past year is that we not have the same people be the liaisons for CPDC and ZBA. It just makes us, I felt like a negligent liaison because I wasn't able to attend a lot of their meetings. So that's my only comment there. Beyond that, sort of, I'm open to how we want to address this. Andy and I could each circulate our list and we can try and piece it together.
Yeah, I'll just explain my list. I went, I simply went through and gave the assignments to the highest.
It's hard to count. So you guys did this collaboratively?
No.
No, we actually did it separately.
Mine's a little, so, mine's a little different. I just simply went with, I think, what we had agreed upon at the, for the last policy round, but that was just to have it ranked and then assign the one or two highest rank, the people with the one or two highest rankings the assignment and then adjust from there. So I simply went across and gave, and put the name of the person or persons who ranked it highest. Now, after I did that, I noticed that there was an, you know, each approximately should have 10 or 11 assignments, but we might want to play around with that.
We need to have 10 or 11 assignments because we're doubling up? Is that what's going on?
Yeah. Yeah. So, so.
Okay.
I think it works out to four with 10, one with 11, but there were a couple, I think Ann was a little short, you know, funky things happen, and Mark was a little short, so I, I gave up, and I had like 14. So they were relatively close, and I just removed myself from and gave it to the person who ranked one or, either tied or ranked one or two away from me, and I just gave it to that person, and it sort of evened things out fairly well. The names are on, register along the side, and on the second page, there's simply a line called totals, and you'll see, I don't know what the seven means, ignore it, but it's 10, 10, 14, 10. Makes sense?
Yeah. So as I mentioned to Bob when I sent in my preferences, I think Bob's suggestion had been 1 to 36, but he may just want to do 1 to 25. So I did 1 through 25, but indicated that I was actually extremely flexible, so that remains true. I feel very flexible in terms of my 1 through 25.
Ditto.
Okay, and these are, these are my version. This way. Actually, my hand went to Bob's.
Thank you.
All right, so I thought the way we could do this is, just start at the top of the list and work our way down.
Which one are we working on?
So.
Are they in the same order?
Yes.
They should be in the same order. I mean, I used the list Bob set, so. So the VASC, we already agreed upon, which is me and Andy for this year, for the school committee. We currently have Andy and one vacancy. Given the rankings there, I suggested Andy and Ann. Okay.
Oh, yeah, I, that's fine. I, in order to give away my extra assignments, you'll see that I listed Landry and Halsey there because they tied for 20, but I'm totally flexible.
Just as, if, for my own edification, when we have two members, as, then we may, we might trade off what meetings we cover. Okay, thank you.
Generally speaking, if there's a hot topic, both members tend to attend. If there's sort of more standard items on the agenda, then usually just one, and then you tag team. It's a nice way of doing it.
Okay.
And school committee, in my opinion, they mean they meet a lot.
Right.
So.
If I might, and from a couple of years back, the discussion on the board, when there's two, it's quite often good to have one person stay to the next year, like in VASC, have two-year term, if you will, for continuity. So there's a person doing it the first year for themselves, the second year for themselves, and a new person joins them, and so on.
That makes sense.
That's good.
The school committee is good because they have a liaison to us, so the liaisons can talk to them.
All right. So, so Ann and Andy, you're comfortable with school committee?
Sure.
Yes.
Yeah.
So for the regional school district, John, you ranked it as 15. How do you feel about that?
For the school committee?
The regional school district.
Oh, I'm fine to take that. I mean, I actually know the elected officials there very well, and I'm happy to be involved with that. I mean, I, let me, can I just say that, you know, it got to be 15 not because of anything other than, you know, the exercise of taking 36.
Yes.
And ranking them.
I agree.
I felt like I was on a fool's errand. I'll just tell you that.
As I went through this and sort of loosely assigned people to liaisons, I didn't bother looking past 15 at that point. It's all sort of up to me.
And, you know, and for me, just because something was 15th or 16th doesn't mean I'm not interested or not willing. I mean, I honestly think, I know we have to march through this exercise this way, but I just want to say out loud that I really think the next time this gets done, we should do it with a system that we've used for the last four or five years, which is a 1, I love it, a 3, I hate it, a 2, I'm happy to do it, and I end up with at least one I hate it and a couple of I love it. You know, I mean, it really worked, and it was kind of simple to follow.
We can, we can absolutely revisit that come springtime.
I think at one point I switched something that was around a 3 with something that was around a 20 because I just was looking at my full list and thinking I needed sort of a diverse portfolio.
That's the way to think about it. Just to, just to comment on that, we all voted for this process recently, and I think it's on our policy.
It is. And I asked a question at the time, too.
I'm gonna, given the time and the fact that we have about 40 of these to go through, I'm just going to keep plowing through.
Sounds good.
So for RMLD, I have myself and Mark. Everybody comfortable with that?
Mm-hmm.
That's fine.
Great. Bylaw.
Yep.
John, how do you feel about that?
Ambivalent.
Wonderful.
That was the right answer.
So for finance. For finance committee, interesting thing happened, which is that Ann and Mark both listed this as 5 and 6. It strikes me as a little odd to have two former members of that committee acting as liaisons. I thought it might be nice to shake it up a little bit.
Agreed.
I've had nine years. Does that make it easy?
So in that spirit, John, how do you feel about being, it being yourself and Ann?
I'm fine with that. I, you know, I enjoy the work.
Great. Permanent Building Committee, Andy and either Mark or John.
Well, I've been working on the capital side, and so it's kind of a match to the Permanent Building Committee, I think, but, you know, I'm not trying to, you know, hog that, but I'm happy to serve there, you know?
I think that's fine. I mean, my preference is more kind of the economic development side of it.
Yeah.
Maybe the marketing and encouragement and then.
Frankly, I like working with these guys. They're all, you know, their brain is organized the same way as mine.
So John, RCTV, I have, I suggested John and Mark.
Can I just clarify whether the PBC had one or two?
I have it here as two.
Okay.
Oh, you did?
And that was Andy and John. Andy just ranked it higher than everybody else.
What's this? On the PBC?
Yeah, Department of Building Committee, line 7.
Okay.
I didn't, I don't have the heroes I ranked it at all.
You have it as a 5.
Let's do this. There we go.
Okay. So RCTV, John, Mark, and Ann, I'll rank that right about the same. John is the highest, so I suggested John and Mark.
Okay, we're about to do that.
Ann, are you okay with that?
That is fine.
Okay. So, cultural, Ann, you comfortable with that one?
Yes.
Great. Climate, Andy had that one ranked the highest?
Yes.
Okay. Ice Arena, John?
Yes.
Great. So now we reach an interesting situation because we have walkable writing, the celebration, animal control, that there wasn't sort of a clear leader on these. And the same is true for the Board of Registars. And historical commission and district, they're a little bit further down, but I figure there's five of those that sort of ended up in the air, so we can just take one.
Grab walkable if that's open.
Great. Celebration?
Yeah, I, you know.
John?
We're talking about the 375th, is that what you're talking about?
It's the general celebration one. They do.
They don't meet very often. They have a trust fund of some sort.
What do they celebrate?
Whatever they want to celebrate.
Okay. I'm my happy guy. I like to celebrate.
I'll take animal control because going up.
I was interested, I was.
Did you want animal control?
Interested in that, if.
They've only met once in the last seven years.
That's why I'm interested.
All right, I will give that one to Andy.
No, Vanessa, if, you have chair responsibilities, so that, you know, if you want to take one, that one, that's fine.
Okay, I will take animal control. I'm going to skip over Board of, or Moderator for just a moment, just so we continue on the ones that were sort of floaters, which is Board of Registars and Custodian of Soldiers and Sailors' Graves and Historical. So Board of Registars.
Those are not in line here. They jump around?
I do, I jump around a little bit. Board of Registars is 16 in the original spreadsheet.
Yep.
So Andy or Ann?
I just said it doesn't matter.
Great, let's do Andy.
Did you say Andy or Ann?
Andy.
So this is Board of Registars?
The Board of Registars, yeah. And I'm going to jump down under Public Service to Custodian of Soldiers and Sailors' Graves. Ann?
That can be me, that's fine.
And then the other one that is a little bit of a floater here is down under Community Development, under Historical and Historic District. Is there anyone who has a particular interest there?
So Landry is custodian, custodian, okay. I'm sorry, what was the question? Historical?
Historical and Historic District.
You're going to reproduce this list, right?
Yes, of course.
We're going to try.
You can have mine. It's okay.
Okay.
All right. Historical and Historic District. Any takers? We can table that one. Why don't we table it? We'll do a tally later. So, back up to Moderator. This has got to be the most boring thing to experience for those people watching at home. Moderator, line 15. Ann, John, myself, and Mark all listed this on the higher side. There is only one. John did have it as the highest, but I think you end up with more than everyone else. So I don't know how you feel about that one.
Well, who's the, who's the retired guy at the table?
Yeah.
I just say it, you know, I mean, there's things I can get done during the day, you know?
Fair enough.
I mean, I mean, let's get it, let's get it sorted, and then, you know what? If it turns out to be too much, I mean, this isn't like, you don't chisel this into concrete. I mean, if we need to, need to use your hand, you can get some help someplace.
All right, so constables, John?
Yep.
Great. So audit.
I'm happy to attend.
Great. Retirement, Ann? Great. Okay. Commissioner of Trust Funds and Veterans Memorial Trust Funds. John, how do you feel about those?
I've served on those before. That's fine. It's a good fit for me.
Wonderful. Council on Aging. Both Mark and I expressed interest on this one. John, I know you've served on that before. Are you okay with that?
That's fine, yeah.
Great.
So which one is getting it?
Council on Aging, myself and Mark.
Okay.
So Board of Health, how about Andy and Ann?
Sure.
Great. I like Recreation. They're a fun group. And just based on ranking, me and Andy. Mark, I know you also had that one fairly higher up, but I think you've gotten some others, so, okay with you?
Yes.
Great. We've already done Custodian of Soldiers and Sailors' Graves. CPDC is where it starts to get fun. All of, four of us listed it as a top three.
Hey, I'm clean on that one.
You are off the, I, I'm willing to back away from that one, even though I think it's a, it's a, I think it's one of the more important ones that we liaise with. So that leaves it down to Andy, Mark, and Ann. My recommendation was Andy and Ann, but that's just my two cents based on the numbers.
The reason I was interested in it was because I think I'd like to work on the Downtown Economic Development Committee or whatever that ends up being, and I thought those two went hand in hand.
That's sort of my rationale as well, that those would be the closest, plus you got MAPC involved.
Boy, the four of you guys were like really jockeying for those.
Well, I mean.
What happened to me? I would have put it higher. Who's been here a long time and understands what the hell that's all about.
I'm happy to, to, to give it over to Ann if I could still work in the Downtown Economic Development Work Group or whatever it's called, and then just use one of you as a resource through CPDC.
Yeah, so I actually, it's so funny, when, if you flip the sheet over, under Subcommittee for EDC, I have Mark and Andy.
Oh, okay, then that'll work fine. Yeah, as long as you cross over.
So for CPDC, then, we'll have Andy and, or sorry, Ann and Mark. Okay, great. In that case, since, for ZBA, then, Ann, would you be comfortable taking the ZBA?
Did we just say that I was going to be doing CPDC?
Oh, you're doing CPDC. Okay, right, sorry. Andy, can you do ZBA?
Yes, sure.
Great.
Just quick, just quickly, because I sense that Andy, if you, if you prefer to switch or swap ZBA for CPDC, if that was important to you, that I'm fine with that. I'm happy to do ZBA if you'd really like to do CPDC.
If you don't mind, I mean, I don't have a strong preference.
That's fine, but I sense a slight preference, that's, that's fine.
That's all other than that.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll flip. Okay, so we'll flip the two of those.
Okay, so to clarify, CPDC is Mark and Andy, and ZBA is John and Ann.
Yes.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
What did I do?
How did I get into that? That's like a number 28 for me.
Well, 28's pretty high.
So, you sort of locked yourself in the corner because you didn't write CPDC high enough.
Oh, Lord.
Who? How did that just happen? Did you notice how that happened?
No, what about, what about the chair?
Yeah, I mean, I could take it, John, if you really don't mind.
I recall someone saying they were...
I haven't heard Alvarado a lot. Have you noticed that?
Speaking of someone who jested the chair, I sympathize with that. And I heard someone say they were retired.
All right, I'm going to take ZBA.
Okay.
All right. Is that better, Tom?
Yes.
I think that's fair.
Your experience then.
Okay. So, let's skip over Historical District for a moment. Conservation, just based on rankings, I suggested John and Ann. You had them as one and three. Are you comfortable with that?
I am.
Yes. Everybody else?
Yep.
Great. Writing Housing Authority, I had this one as the highest, so, would you be okay with that? Great. Public Safety, technically, John and I had this one ranked, but I'm willing to step back on this one, Ann, if you want it, for police and fire.
So, is that two of us?
So, that's, John, that would be you and Ann, yes. Last year, we added a second one. So, ATRAC, we have Ann, who ranked it the highest. Pretty good. Arcasa, there's one liaison here, both Mark and John ranked this high, so I sort of leave it to the two of you to talk through.
Duke out.
If you want it for continuity, that's fine. I'm interested, but I'm happy to... This isn't a bad year to have two just because the grant expires and you're exploring kind of the formation of what to do.
Here's the only problem. I think their bylaws need to be amended because there's only room for one.
True, yes, until October 1st, you're right.
So, you know, I mean, I hadn't been doing this for five years. I've kind of got a flow of it, Mark.
Yeah.
And I was involved in it before I was on the Board of Selectmen, so I would like to maintain membership there. Now, I mean, if we need to do it with a different liaison, I could petition them, you know, as a citizen.
If you support on October 1st, you can just do what you will, see what happens.
So, why don't we, Mark, it seems like you're amenable to keeping John?
Yes.
So, why don't we, John, since you have a nice history here, we can keep you as the primary, and then in October, what would the process be then? Because then they fall under, it's no longer grant funded.
Well, right now, it's under Articles of Incorporation, or whatever they're called.
There were certain bylaws that had to be matched in order to get the grant funding.
Right.
One of, so, one of those articles included that some, that there was room for one person on that board from this body.
Right.
So, they were very specific.
Yeah, they are.
In their bylaws for the grant funding. In other words, they check it off. You want this, 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 and this, and they had to comply. So, you know, between now and October, that's going to change, you know. And, you know, Mark, I think that it would not be a problem at all, and I know you'd be welcome to come, and, you know, it's just a question of, we don't vote on anything cataclysmic, okay?
They're not checking ideas at the door.
You know, it's a, it's an exchange of ideas, really, and it's a support mechanism.
Yeah, so I can be an attendee.
You could be showing up, and then with the idea that there's going to be some changes.
We have employees that just show up because they're interested.
We do have a lot, actually, a surprising amount of people show up, so.
All right, great. So, we'll have John, and then Mark, we can revisit over the summer or September, and perhaps you'll have to join officially in October.
Okay.
Okay, great. Library Trustees, so Andy and Ann, you both ranked this comfortably.
I don't have strong feelings, Ann.
They're a fun group. I did it for FinCom. I like them. Essentially, it's between the two of you.
I have, I don't have a strong preference either way.
Someone pick.
You have a coin.
Well, it'd help me if I knew, it'd help me if I knew that, I would do his, the Historic District Commission and Historic, I always get these two mixed up.
Historical Commission and Historic District.
I'd be happy to do those, but if I'm going to do those, I'd sort of like to cap at that, but I don't feel strongly about doing those, so.
I'll add one other variable to this, which is, under Public Works, we have Trails and Forests. Andy, you ranked these at 10 and 11, which is higher than everyone else?
Yeah, they're fun.
So, would you like to take those, and Ann can take Library?
Yeah, that's fine with her.
Sure, great. Okay. So Cemetery is another one that, now we're under Public Works, this is another fun group. They're lively. No pun intended.
Another committee that meets on top of us.
Yes, they tend to meet at about 6 o'clock. This is, this is a tough one for me to attend, otherwise I would join them again.
They meet when?
You may have a similar problem with that.
That would be somewhat challenging for me.
Do we have anyone else who can be here at 6 o'clock when they meet?
Sometimes.
Okay, Andy or John?
You know, I'm open to that, but I think I have a list as long as my arm.
I was going to say, I think.
Yeah.
All right, so.
Yeah.
How frequently do they meet? Monthly?
And they do meet on Tuesdays. It's kind of like Recreation.
So, all right, let's pause on Cemetery then, and go to MWRA.
I'd be happy to do that one. Certainly shouldn't be John.
Yeah, I agree, it shouldn't be John. I think I'm a little short, so why don't?
There's a lot of daytime stuff with that.
Is there?
I mean, I, yeah, there is. I mean, I, you know, I've done this, again, I, you know, I had the daytime available, and I coincidentally happened to have a 20-year relationship with the Executive Director. So, I mean, so that's kind of why I was in that spot to fires. However, you know, I mean, somebody else can take it. Mark, you can take it.
Can you do the daytime stuff?
And, you know, it has some daytime stuff.
Some is workable, if it's always...
Well, there you go.
Define some, monthly, weekly?
Yeah, but you don't have to go every month. I mean, they're very good about keeping you up to date on stuff, and...
So, let's give, shake things up, and we'll give Mark. Once we go through this, we'll do a count.
Mark goes to Cemetery?
Cemetery, wait, no, Mark is MWRA.
Cemetery is looking like it might be mine. I mean, we're going to have to look at this list.
We'll have to, we'll recount, we'll recalibrate. We're not going to give you 20. All right, let's tell you who put John in Cemetery. All right. So, can I ask everyone if you've been keeping track, hopefully you have, of what your assignments are?
Absolutely not. Are you kidding me?
I have seven.
Come on, John!
Just circle the ones.
All right, I have 11.
All right, let me do mine.
I did tell you I'm retired.
We're going to have to upgrade our software program.
Yeah.
I have eight.
I have seven.
I have seven primary, you know, primaries and two, two firsts, you know, double up.
I can take historical.
Mine is 15.
All right, so John doesn't get any more.
Let's give more.
I'll take Historical, since I only have...
15.
Okay, I'm not getting any more, right?
We're not getting any more.
You'll take Historical?
I have doubles, though, you have another person with you, but yeah, 15, your initial next to it.
Vanessa, you just changed Historical to yourself?
And I have assigned Historical to myself. So, Mark, how many do you have?
I have eight.
Ann, how many do you have?
11.
Okay, so Ann is in good shape. Mark and I are light.
I'm going to take a look at the back.
Don't forget you have other committees.
Well, we'll get there, we'll get there. All right. So, I just want to take a look at what John has, since he has a lot. John, I have you for Regional School District.
That's not a lot. That's not, that's not a lot, and as I said, we have an elected official in town, who I commiserate with on a regular basis, so, you know, that can probably be done more by phone and by reviewing the minutes, more than anything else. So, you got that one for me?
Yes.
Bylaw Committee, is that, is that true?
I have you as bylaw.
Mark, I think that's a good job for you. I think that's an exceptional job.
Take it just for a moment, the Bylaw Committee, how many could we possibly rank? There were 38 in total. Just take the number I gave it.
I will remind you that I have like a number 32 that I got.
How often is...
And just let me tell you, you're going to enjoy it.
These are important committees that people volunteer for.
You're going to really enjoy whatever the Bylaw Committee, and you can work on things like Utility Access Portal.
The Bylaw Committee, I actually have an interest in it, depends how, you know, I like, I write regulations.
This is right up your alley.
This is all about rules and regulations. You're going to like it. They only meet three times a week.
All right. So, why don't we take John off of bylaw, and we'll give it to Andy?
Okay. I got FinCom, right?
Yes.
You have FinCom.
I got Permanent Building Committee, who doesn't meet every month.
And you're sharing that with Andy.
They just about do meet every month, yeah. And they meet, they tend to meet early, like 5, 6 o'clock.
And, okay, RCTV, that's a fit.
You also have the Ice Arena?
Yeah, that's, the Ice Arena is three or four times a year, and, you know, that, that's less formalized meetings.
So, John, you're current, so are you at nine, or are you still at eight?
One, two, three, so I add something. I added one, two, three, four, six, I'm still at eight.
Okay, why don't we give, how do you feel about Celebration? We can take that off John's plate.
I feel lovely about Celebration.
That's a great idea. Now, the Moderator, I'm, I think I ranked that high, actually, and we haven't settled on that.
I don't know, Alan said you...
I wrote your, I put your name next to it.
I'm there?
You have that one, yes.
Excellent.
Moderator's a tough guy to work with, though.
I know.
He's lovely, I'll get him, don't worry.
He's kidding, Alan.
Yes, I am. That's my sense of you.
So, all right, can everyone do a count of their own again, please? And Caitlin, can you count for John?
Why does John get?
I get special treatment.
You're retired?
He's retired.
Six, seven.
This is definitely...
I got the trust funds, too, right?
Okay, you're down to 13.
Okay, we're going in the right direction.
I'm at eight.
I'm at 10.
I'm at nine.
All right.
I'm at 11.
All right. Anna's is the only one who has made it to home base. All right.
I'd say that's closer.
All right, so, Sean?
That's manageable, given, given the...
Are you okay with that?
Given the composition of the ones that I have, several of these can be managed in the, you know, pretty comfortably in the day, and...
Which one is that, John?
All of them.
I would say, no, what was the last one you just gave to John?
I took away from John Celebration.
Celebration.
Okay. So, Mark, is there anyone that you'd like to add to bring you up to 10? We'll make this like a board game. You can steal from anyone on the table.
I'm picturing this turning into a board game.
I mean, at least we're having fun.
I wonder if anyone's still watching from hell. Thanks for bearing with us.
There's been a lot of emergency calls in town.
Somebody want the Board of Cemetery Trustees?
Well, that was the one, that's the timing one that's tough for us.
Okay. Somebody took MWRA, right?
Yeah, Mark, yes, I got it.
Mark has it.
Vanessa, is Historical District, both the Historical Commission and the Historical District Commission, did you combine those?
Yes.
13, right.
Okay, and who, you're doing that?
I'll take that, unless someone else wants to take it.
That's right. Who wants Library Trustees? Is that you, Andy?
Uh, no.
That's Andy, sorry.
I love the historic stuff, but I'm, I'm kind of...
You can take it if you want.
I'm kind of...
How many are you at?
I'm at 10.
I'll take 11.
But you're not at 13.
That would put me at 12. So, that's fine, I'm okay.
All right, so, so is that a yes you want Historical, or no?
Are you trying to catch up, or what are you doing?
No, I like, I like history.
Okay, so I will give you Historical.
Thank you.
All right.
That sounded funny, I'm sorry.
Mark, are you looking to add more? I just didn't know if you wanted FinComs.
So, I could do FinCom. I guess my question is, with the subcommittees coming up?
Right.
Before kind of finding another one that's a monthly.
Maybe we'll give you a heavier subcommittee role. All right, so let's flip that page over, and we're not subcommittees.
Who's doing Walkable?
Me.
Okay. Good times. So, Communications, and this is one that, these are the existing subcommittees from last year. When we, at a future meeting, go through our goals, these may change.
Yeah.
But we can revisit at that time. So, for existing subcommittees that we have open, Selective Policy, Communications, Andy, you ranked that as number one?
No, I didn't. Oh, I did. That's right, I'm sorry, different ranking, I got confused.
Okay. So, number one, is there, I can stay on that unless someone else would like it.
Well, you've, have you done a fair amount of work?
I've done a ton of work on the social media policy.
Then I would either give up my spot...
Well, that's a two-person, so...
The Communications.
Yeah. All right, so why not, I'll keep that.
What about Ann?
Yep.
So, does Ann get kicked off of that? She doesn't need to be, I mean, I...
Well, no, so I'm on it currently.
Right.
I need a second.
Right.
And nobody...
You know, you've been on there a long, you've done a lot of work with us already, you need to stay there.
Yeah.
I'm inclined to agree.
I think so.
So, either, either Ann or, it doesn't matter to me.
So, Andy, you ranked it as one?
Ann, are you okay with that, unless you have a dying desire to be Communications? I, I care a lot about having a clear Communications policy. I don't have to be the one to be developing it, but I think, you know, coming on board, I think there's been ambiguity with our Communications policy.
Then, why don't you take it?
Why don't the two of you work on that?
Yeah. I don't need to be on there. I just do it because I like to write.
That was sort of why I kind of wanted. Okay, so that'll be myself and Ann. So, Capital Projects.
I would like to stay involved in Capital Projects.
John, myself, and Ann all expressed interest in this one. I also would recommend that we combine Oakland Road with Capital Projects.
Yeah.
Bob, I see you nodding.
Yeah.
Okay. This is one I have a lot of interest in as well.
I will, I feel like I'm getting a pretty full portfolio, full and diverse portfolio.
Okay, so we'll keep that as John and me. And, John, are you okay, as I said, combining Oakland Road?
Absolutely. I mean, every time we met, we talked about both of them, so...
All right. So, Housing Trust. So, Andy, I think you did this one last year?
Yeah, and Barry, Barry was sort of the lead on this and had some, developed some material. I'm happy to keep doing it, but I would need some assistance.
Mark?
I can join.
Yeah, okay, great. Okay, so, that takes us to Economic Development. Given the current distribution, I was going to recommend Andy and Mark.
I'm good for Mark.
John, you had, you said you were available for one?
Which one?
Economic Development.
The new Economic Committee.
Yes, I am.
So, both Andy and Mark also expressed interest on this one, given your current load with the other items. Are you okay with that? So, Andy and Mark, you're okay with that?
Yeah, yes.
Great. And then RMLD, I'd like to stay on that one. I've just been following it for the last two years. Mark, you also expressed interest?
I've been pretty involved for a while with RMLD.
Okay. So, I think the way this is broken down, John, you have the least, which makes sense, I think, given your load on the liaison side. Are you okay with that?
Yep.
And then, and that sort of balances me off as well, since I was a little light. And then, as we continue for new goals or priorities for this year, we can revisit this as well.
So, wait a minute, what's this? So, wait a minute, what's this?
Oh, and I'm missing, I'm missing one, which is the ADHOC.
Oh, right.
What are we doing here?
Which one? Oh, no, it's more of that, that was everybody's top plot.
Okay, so this really is...
So you can bottom chart, you can just get rid of it.
I've got one subcommittee because I got all the other stuff.
I agree.
Okay.
So, the ADHOC for Human Rights Commission?
And that was...
That was me and Barry, um, and we've had one meeting, I think that's something that needs to be picked up quickly.
Mm-hmm.
I am, I am quite interested in it, and I think it could pair well with ATRAC, because I think that the work of both are related.
Okay, great, um, is there a second that would let, I mean, I can stay on, but if there's a second person that's really interested in this, I can also step back.
You should have a partner.
Yeah, oh yeah, no, this is a...
She should, but I tapped on, on subcommittees.
Mark, how are you? You currently have two.
That's great, I was interested in EDC, RMLD.
Oh shit, you have three.
Well, I, I, you know, uh, if you need me, I'll, I'll do it.
How many subcommittees are you on, Andy?
And can we name the working groups, but never, that aside, um...
You have two.
I'm on the Housing Trust, which I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Mark to take the lead on, um, because of my skill set, or lack thereof, uh, the EDC I'm really excited about, um...
But those are your two?
And those are, I guess I only have two then.
And I have three.
I guess I'm doing, um, the ADHOC. No, I'm fine, I'm excited about it, it's just, it's, you know, it's a question of time.
Um, how often do you think that they will meet?
The goal for that was monthly.
Okay.
There'll be a pay increase tomorrow.
Thank you.
Maybe you need seven members of the board.
Thank you, John.
Okay.
There we go.
That is...
So, Ann, you're gonna do that too?
Yes.
Okay.
So, the other thing that we have here is the Development Project Liaisons, and I wanted to ask if this is something we want to continue?
The Gobletment Project?
Yeah.
Oh yeah, like the report I gave tonight on Postmark.
Yes, exactly, um, so I don't have strong feelings on this way, just wanted to see what the board thought about whether or not we keep these.
I think it's a good idea, I had a challenging experience, um, but may you all fare better.
Alright, given the fact that we are, that we have got a lot of shovels around.
Yeah.
And more to come, and we're talking about economic development in a variety of ways, people excited about being on the committee, um, you know, potential, you know, filling a position, um, to kind of abandon the idea of, I mean, from my perspective, I will continue to meet with that developer whether we decide to not do it or not, I just think it's really important.
So, in that case, we have three vacancies, if, if everybody sort of agree on what we're keeping.
I, I agree, I just set expectations.
We've got the Main Street 40R, which is the former Sunoco station, Eaton Lakeview, and Wilburn Street 40B.
Where are you?
I can actually, you know what?
Wilburn Street's almost done.
Yeah, Wilburn Street will be done soon, um...
Do you want that one?
No, no, I don't, because it's, there's nothing there to do, there's nothing to do. Um, I have no problem whatsoever, you know, taking these on, because most of these things can happen, I can meet these guys at ten o'clock.
State, state, local stuff.
You know, I mean, that's actually the preferred time to meet these, to meet these developers, to be honest with you.
So, Mark, do you want, you expressed some interest in, um, Sunoco, would you like that one?
Yes, yeah, I'd like to grab one of them.
Okay, um, and then...
Why don't you take Eaton Lakeview? That one's meaty.
I'm flexing it.
Um, well, I mean, you know, why don't you take Eaton Lakeview, Wilburn's wrapping up?
Alright.
Is that, is that okay?
Yep.
So who's taking Eaton Lakeview?
So I guess that's me, and I also have Postmark.
Yep.
And then, who's gonna jump on to EMark, when that goes into the ground?
Well, I have EMark.
Okay.
Ann, would you like one, because we can...
And she shakes her head.
Um, happy, happy to, um, I also just wanted to mention the, um, the Tarrant Lane project, it's not technically in writing, but certainly impacts writing residents, and some of whom have emailed to, to ask if I'm to attend, and to ask if Mark planned to attend tomorrow night's board meeting in, in Wakefield, and I said that I plan to attend, to attend pending tonight's liaison conversation, so, um, I know, that may not be an official role, but I...
Oh, I think we can add it to the list.
It's a reporting role.
I think, yeah, alright, so you'll take Tarrant then?
That's great.
That works.
Okay, fabulous, so we are done with liaison assignments, um...
Who took Wilburn Street?
I'll take it.
Hall, John, are we missing any?
There might be new ones, but this is a good list right now.
Okay, so, fantastic, um, Caitlin, do you have all of this, do you want?
Yep, I do it.
Fabulous, so, next up, so I added...
I'm impressed.
So, Mike, you got me now.
Yeah, I'm excited, and John, we'll, of course, see you at the conference meeting.
Excellent, looking forward to it.
Alright, so I added two items that are new.
Mike lives in that neighborhood.
Ah, um, one of them is Select Board Meeting Structure Discussion, and so, I wanted to get a feel for the board of, you know, how you envision these discussions taking place. Um, there are some public bodies that have very strict formalities, they go by last names, they ask permission to speak, there are only five of us, um, the other option is a little bit more of a relaxed format, where people sort of speak freely, it's more of dialogue, um, I'm, I'm open to both, I'm just curious what, you know, if there are preferences one way or the other.
Sorry, I missed the first part of the sentence, so I'm completely oblivious to what you're talking about.
Andy.
I was, I'm easily distracted.
Uh, I said I added this as a way to get the board's opinion on how we, as a board, function more broadly, um, some boards do a very formal structure, asking permission to speak, you know, Mr. and Madam Chair.
Yep.
Um, others are more informal, and they just have a discussion.
Right.
It's more casual, I'm open to both scenarios, I'm curious what the feel of the board is.
What was the this, I guess is what I missed, you said...
This.
Board operation.
How we operate, how we have discussions.
Activities, meetings, structure.
Oh, 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 I see, we've moved on now from this, thank you.
Yeah, we're done with you.
I can let go of this now.
Yes.
Okay, right, we're on to that part, I'm with you.
So...
I have a strong preference, I think when we talk among ourselves, we get a lot more done, I think it's a very effective style of communication and negotiation, that's, you know, the idea of, you know, kind of in an autocratic way, um, being too formal about this, well, we're here as a, as a collaborative group to get things done, and I think that if you use that, that method of communicating through the meeting, you know, and obviously it's gotta have some management, but you got the stick, so, you know...
I think my concern is more from a timeliness perspective, we have set, we have a lot of goals, there's, the next item on our agenda is Future Agenda Discussions, and I have something like seven or eight potential items that we can talk about that go above and beyond the standard operating of the town, right?
Yeah.
This is the long-term planning, this is the policy setting, this is what I see as the permission of four, so, my goal as Chair is to try and make the meetings more efficient on the business side, so that we can get the staff what they need, and then allow us time to have discussions on sort of the fun stuff that, that comes from being on board.
Boy, we got a lot done tonight, and we're fifteen minutes behind, which is...
Record.
Which is in parrots of, you know...
So, so, you know, being efficient is sort of my driving force, um...
Madam Secretary? Madam Secretary, that's you. Good boy.
So you're giving me my TV show, or is it something else you're saying?
It's been a long day, it's been a long day.
Yes, Andy.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
I thought we were supposed to call her Vanessa.
Well, I'm calling her Madam Chair, because Ann did, um, anyway.
Focus!
Yeah, I, I think that...
It is ten o'clock.
We elect you to, um, preside over the meetings, and I think mu- much of the time, I think it's important for us to ask, we launch by you, um, because conversations can quickly get, get, get out of control, um, but then there are times, as John says, where sort of a free flow of ideas is fine, but I think we should, someone needs to be presiding, and I think we should always look to you, I think it'll make your life easier, um, and it'll keep us, you know...
Mark?
So, I generally like the informal structure, I think that it puts a lot of work onto the Chair to just make sure that everyone has a chance to, to speak, and that we're, we're all making that work, but structurally, I think that's the best, I think we'll have good discussions, I think we'll pretty quickly understand where we have things that we should work through.
Correct.
And that's my preferred style.
Ann?
Uh, that's fine, I think it would be helpful for expecta-, for expectations to be clear, I think it, it does put a lot on you to manage the, the meetings, because things can get derailed, um, absent structure, um, but I, I do think that I have a lot of confidence in this board to be able to get things done, and communicate collaboratively, and, um, and less formally, and so, I think that we should go forward with that plan, assuming that you're comfortable with managing it, and I appreciate your, um, your interest in efficiency, efficiency, because I did hear from people, uh, I think before it even left, um, uh, the, the, the election, the, the election results, you know, can you see if, if meetings can happen more efficiently, or in a more timely way, so, I think, um, it would be great, uh, to operate in that fashion, and if, if it seems like the informality has resulted in things going off the rails too much, we could always revisit.
I think the only place that I would suggest we keep a certain amount of structure is when we have people giving presentations to us, to allow them to go through the entire presentation, and save our questions for the end, because what I've seen happen a lot is when we have these presentations by the staff, one person raises a question, that raises another question, and now we're, you know, fifteen minutes off track, and they still need to go back and finish.
But you know, you did that tonight, and it worked well, generally.
I think because they had four presenters, and so...
Yeah, but you were really clear with us that this was a listen.
Yes, well, that's one of the goals that I had.
Yeah, it's okay, you're new, um, but you were very clear about that, I mean, that did spawn a million questions for me, but Future Agenda, yeah, let's bring them back, and, you know, and have a discussion with them.
Good.
The other, the other place I think where it would be, would be helpful to have structure is when there are motion, you know, I think you need to per, when there are motions, and we're figuring out what's, what motions have been made, what are we actually discuss, what is the discussion on the table?
Okay, great.
Um, one question or, or concern, think about how to deal with it, so if we have some, a topic or group on the agenda, the idea of kind of just listening and then putting kind of the only discussion onto a future agenda feels very unnatural.
Mm-huh.
And very delayed, and just kind of, it's, you're going down a path, and then it's like, okay, that's the end, and we'll come back in several weeks, to me, that feels disruptive and not productive.
But don't you think that we could solve that, so for example, tonight was packed, and you know, there were a couple of things here that we did not know exactly how long they were gonna take, I mean, you know, look, the liaison thing, you know, who knows how long that was gonna take, so I think, I agree with what Mark is saying, the idea that you gotta wait a month to ask the question doesn't feel right, tonight, I think, I think it becomes incumbent on you, and, and I'm happy to help you, as, as I've told you, to create an agenda that allows presentation to end, and then some Q and A discussion, but that wasn't gonna work today, I mean, it was just too, it was too much in here.
Well, I think the way we did it with Bob, where we had half an hour on the agenda, his presentation was ten minutes.
He adjusted to that, though. Wouldn't you agree with that, Bob?
Yeah.
I mean, there was stuff there you could have talked about, you know, but in the interest of time.
Yeah.
So, alright, so I think this is some great feedback, why don't we give it...
Can I just add one more thing?
Oh, sorry, I forgot, sure.
I think during many or most public hearings, you should also retain a more formal structure, you typically have a room full, and that sets some guidance and expectations for, there's lots of time that people have never been in here before.
Agreed.
Because we can have our discussion after the public hearing closes, so, I think that's a point really well taken, so...
Yep, I agree.
One other question, um, do, do we as a group feel comfortable that if there's material that we've been presented, we pretty much will have read it, and have at least some familiarity with what's there, so that, one of the things that could happen is if the presentation really replicates what we already have, maybe that's not the best use of time, now, I understand getting out to the public's a different story, but in terms of our own thinking and deliberation, if it's in the packet, you know, can we take that as kind of a given, and that we're working from there, as opposed to, I'm just gonna start at the beginning, even though you've got all the material here?
Yeah, let me ask a question on that, and this comes from a board many years ago, um, we were asked as staff, not necessarily at RMLD, not to include presentations in the packet, that's fine, because it means we could work on them right out of Tuesday night, um, which is more helpful for the board to see, because most of us can adjust and do it Thursday, depending on the topic, but, you know, certainly a rehearsed presentation such as Colleen, she worked on it today, she met with me this morning, but if she knew the deadline of Thursday, she would have finished it last week.
I think, well, one of the conversations I had with Bob too was sort of being respectful of staff time, and the amount of detail that goes into these presentations, and they put a tremendous amount of work into some of them, um, and it's appreciated, but at the same time, do we necessarily, as a policy setting four, need that level of depth in a presentation, or, my take on this is we're relying on their expertise to give us the high level, we then have an opportunity for discussion, where if we have specific questions, we can go a little bit deeper, but do we necessarily need a thirty-minute presentation on staff, from staff? I think it depends on the target.
I like the presentation, and I, and I actually don't like, I mean, the idea of seeing the presentation for the first time, I know the subject material that's coming, okay, you know, I had a fairly good idea where it was coming from, but frankly, I think when somebody puts the amount of time into a presentation, they need an audience that's listening, the fact that we can get it after the fact, I think is really important, you know, from the, because there's often a time, I'd like to, like I asked for that presentation.
And that's the exact philosophy I shared with Colleen this morning, I said, maybe this board feels differently, but past boards have said exactly what John just said, so that if you give me the presentation, I can share it with them later, that's most helpful, yeah, whatever you want.
That would be mine.
I'm, I'm... Mark?
So that's not my preferred style, but I think it's fine if we build in the time for discussion with the, with that first meeting, in other words, just to have the presentation and then a gap, to me, that feels like three steps, when it really should have been one.
I guess it depends on the purpose of the presentation, is it something that we are gonna then deliberate over and make a decision on, um, and then do we wanna have And then do we want to have that material ahead of time to review it and make sure we're comfortable with it? Or is it something, if it's something like tonight's RMLD presentation, that was fine?
Yeah, but I think, you know, Mark wanted to ask some questions because they were on his mind. I understood that. I think that tonight was just an anomaly. I think normally you would be able to structure an agenda that would allow for the discussion you're looking for.
Normally, we have that Q and A.
You know, I agree with that.
Built into the timing.
Yes.
Yeah, I think that works.
So Bob, to answer your question, I think there seems to be unanimous decision agreement that after the fact is fine.
Okay.
I would, I would agree with Andy, however, that if we're going to be voting on something, then it would be helpful to have it in advance because I process, for example, you know, the town manager goals, which you presented with the memorandum in detail. Like I'd really process that a lot more than I have yet processed the RMLD presentation.
And like a driveway hearing, you have to make a decision that night. It's a hearing. We tend to throw everything at you then.
Yeah. And I also would like to point out, oh, the presentations themselves. You mentioned about what level of depth to go into, do we, are we sort of looking for? And in order to be more productive and get, working on our goals, I agree with you. I don't think we necessarily need upfront that level of detail, but we can always, you know, if we get an overall picture, we can always ask more specific questions if we'd like to.
I agree. I think that's great.
Can I make a suggestion? The one caveat to that would be that folks would be prepared to answer those more detailed questions during the discussion. So in other words, if we're getting more of an overview and then we have a question and then it's, well, we're going to have to go back. Sometimes I understand that's just what it is. They'll have to go back for detail. But generally speaking, I would, if we're going to get a higher level, then I think they should, either an appendix or their head or both, be able to address the issue as we bring it up, especially if we're going to be taking a vote on it.
Yeah.
So I think we seem to be in good shape there. There were two other things that I wanted to raise on that particular topic. The first is, what are the thoughts on changing how we do office hours? So I had office hours this evening. I had one person, but in the past, we don't always get attendees. And so is that the right, and again, you know, we can discuss this more as part of the communications policy, but is that the right approach to be available to residents? Or do we want to consider an office hours senior center or an office hours at the schools or the library, sporting events? I mean, I'm sort of trying to think outside the box of, you know, we're essentially asking people to come to us on a Tuesday night at 6:30. I find it hard to be here at 6:30 on a Tuesday night. So I feel like part of our role is to be out in the community and we do that all the time, but maybe we could also incorporate a way of having office hours in the community where people are and are more likely to stop by and ask us questions.
How about we rotate at, if we, I don't know, this may not work, but just throwing it out there. People like going out to breakfast in town and there are a lot of breakfast places in town where you can have coffee.
Coffee with a cup.
Right.
I have about seven or eight hours of these every week.
Yeah. So I think.
Just so you know, I'm.
If people are available, you know, I mean, I'm around some Saturday mornings, I'm free and I can go, but I don't know if that works for everybody. Just a thought, because I think.
So I just wanted to throw that out there. I want to continue because we still have to go through agendas. The other item as far as format goes is liaison reports tend to take up a lot of time. They take up about 20 to 30 minutes at the start of every meeting. It has been recommended that the liaison reports be provided in writing in advance so that they are included in the packet. So they would need to be turned in to Bob or Caitlin by Wednesday morning?
Thursday.
Yeah, you can give it like Monday, Thursday.
You mean Wednesday morning?
Yeah.
Excellent.
I think you really mean Wednesday.
It's all about padding deadlines. Okay.
So I got 13 of these.
But not all of them have, you know, not.
I have 14 pages.
No, but.
Yes, mother.
From the perspective of, one, it creates a record for people that don't watch it or maybe missed the start of the meeting. Now they have something to refer back to that's in the actual packet. And it could help abbreviate the amount of time spent on liaison reports where if you have six liaison reports, you maybe pick the top two.
Why would we even do them? If we're going to, if you're going to write a report, which is fine with me, you know, it's an executive summary, why would you even do liaison reports?
I think it's important though to have, you know, to give an update for the community. And everyone reads our 100 to 200-page packet every meeting.
They don't.
I know, it's crazy. So this way it gives, if we have particular items that are timely, when I was doing cemetery, when they change their rules each time I would mention it. So it's just a reminder. So I think those types of things could be included, but maybe some of the other things could be slipped into the report.
Right.
Into the written report. So that was.
The end goal being that if we do liaison reports, they'd be short.
Yes.
And then just be, it wouldn't necessarily be a highlight of each, but it might just be a highlight of some.
Yes. And it creates a written report in the packet.
And maybe not imagine it as pages per liaison report, but rather just a quick summary.
Couple of, like a sentence. If you're going more than a sentence, it's too long, I think, generally speaking.
Wow.
You have 13. That should be a good thing.
So I get 13 sentences? I don't even start gusting till about six or eight hundred words.
Moving right along. Okay, so, all right. So unless there are other topics that people want to discuss as far as format, I'm going to move on to future agendas. Great. So I thought, I left this as a standing item on each of our agendas that we discuss both the next meetings and further look ahead for topics we want to discuss because especially if they pertain to other boards, we want to ask them to come in or certain staff. I think it's respectful of them and their time and their scheduling to give them a heads up that we want to work with them or have questions. So some of the topics that I've sort of been jotting down over time, one of the issues that came up is the fact that non-residents are not allowed to be voting members on town committees. There may be occasions when this is contrary to the ideal of what this committee would like to do. So that's one. As far as select board goals, I think an onboarding manual would be great.
Yes.
I think we should invite other boards to speak. I know this has been done traditionally, so sort of working them in and if there's a priority, Bob and I talked about this. Traffic, speed and parking is always a fun one. I think that's one we need to revisit, especially as it pertains to parking in the downtown area. The DPW land, so I wrote this as reality versus dream, like is this a possibility and what does that look like and, you know, what's our path forward? And obviously it would rely heavily on RMLD. I want to work with RMLD. They have a lot of really exciting developments happening. You know, the electrifying vehicles, is it possible? Obviously that's going to require a lot of staff.
They're not going to require police cruisers. That would be like.
You know, they have a surprising amount of pickup, but no. Okay, so.
Faster than gas cars, just to be clear.
We talked about that this morning and it's definitely a worthwhile topic, but you have to understand, they have a very long time for you. So they're interested in towns' buses right now, fleets, as she said. So Redding's not really on their map just yet, but it's an ongoing discussion.
Right. Well, that's the thing. I think none of these are necessarily going to be immediately resolved, but I think if we start talking about them, we start heading in that direction.
I think it would be really helpful if you sort of put PTTF on a quarterly schedule or some schedule so then we can start tailoring our meetings to hit your desires because there's always interest in the community about one of those topics, whether it's speed limits or parking or whatever.
I don't know how often that meets, but can we consider that?
We meet monthly. We meet monthly.
Monthly. So how about the, whatever the last meeting in June is?
Okay.
Would that be a reasonable timeframe?
Honestly, whatever you like.
It keeps us on a quarterly schedule is where I was thinking.
Yeah, it could be quarterly, it could be a little less. I wouldn't suggest going too much more than quarterly. It's probably not enough.
And then obviously we talked about Bob's goals, so that's something we should be setting in the next few meetings to start that conversation in addition to his multi-year goals. So those are the ones that I had. I don't know what everybody else might want to add to that list.
What was the first one you had, Vanessa?
Non-residents voting members of town committees. And I don't know if that's even possible or not.
That's a charter.
It's a charter.
But yes, it's absolutely possible.
Okay.
We need to discuss that on the charter committee, that topic.
But, you know, Mark can deal with the bylaw.
Write that down.
That's me.
I'm not on the bylaw committee.
Who got that? Oh, Andy.
All right, make sure you write that down.
I have a suggestion.
Sure.
The presentation we had tonight from a completely independent, private group was really good. I mean, you know, I think it's, we have probably, we could take 15 minutes, 10 or 15 minutes, and invite somebody different to every meeting. And we would, I think there'd be an eye-opening experience for the people that watch and for everybody here. And, you know, they'd range from, you know.
Redding Symphony.
Yes.
The whole long list.
I mean, there's just, there's a, the garden club is like the poster child though. They've been doing more things for 60 years.
I don't realize how active they were. I've only seen a handful of what they do.
And we've had them in before, you know, but it kind of fell off the radar screen. I was thrilled to have them back. I honestly think that if we let them know that we were interested in what they're doing, Rotary is another one. I mean, there's a, there's more, there's, what do we have, 25 meetings a year? 30?
About that.
Yes, between those two.
I'm just saying, if we set aside 15 minutes, a strict 15 minutes, and let them know and let them know that they'd be welcome and we'd set up a schedule, I think you'd find them, you know, we only hear from these organizations when they come in and want something because it's the only time we really give them airtime.
Yeah.
And I think that they've got a great story to tell.
That's a wonderful idea. So it's dutifully on my list, all the suggestions.
Two ideas. One is with each of us having 11 assignments or 13 or whatever it is, there are a lot of activities on here and I wonder if the chairman of some of those groups might deserve a little bit of airtime once a year?
Yes.
Something like that?
So I have that here. This was my third. It's inviting other boards to allow them to come speak to us and.
Okay, check.
Excellent.
Let me give one other, so that.
It's not a summons, it's an opportunity.
Right. If you'd like to come, you can.
And that's really the thing.
Yeah. If you'd like to come, you can. It'd be great. The board would love to hear from you. If it doesn't work, it doesn't work. The other question is, is there a way that, we create schedules and oftentimes they can be very full for, let's say, the next meeting or two meetings hence. Could we block out, let's say, 15 minutes or maybe 30 is more accurate for items that may come up at, let's say, at this meeting, we had something that came up from public comment. We know we can't deal with at night, but rather than going and looking and saying, well, the next opening is in August, might there be a way to reserve a little bit of time for, if there's a particular item that comes up? And if not, we don't do it. But if we do, we do it. And we plan it's what fits into the agenda. It's not something that would be, we'd anticipate it, we'd include it. But it's just, it's a placeholder in case there's something that comes up so that we don't have to just kind of throw everything into orbit or push it out two or three months.
I think my only pause on that, I like it in theory. My only pause is that sometimes when people come and they speak during public comment, their request or query tends to be of a bigger scope or scale than, you know, we had the people who came, it must have been close to a year ago, about their speeding concerns on Haverhill and it took months to get a study done and then the police did their part and then they came before us. So I think, yes, we could. I think we might have to take it on a case-by-case basis though, because I.
I completely agree. There'd be some items that don't lend themselves to something that has to happen at the next meeting. Although actually in that circumstance, let's say that that topic comes up, if we want to, if we want to talk about it, if I'm understanding things correctly, we can't, even though it was brought up as a.
That's a problem. Well, I mean, there are, there is, we do have a section in the, in the agenda for items that were not anticipated 48 hours prior. But as someone who just spent a year spending a lot of his life with Bob via email, putting together these agendas, it is, things get busy faster than you can imagine and it is a challenge to, to fit everything in. So, yeah, I don't want to burden the chair with having to get too many things in, you know. She'll, she'll talk with the town manager and they usually fill up pretty quickly.
I think this.
Just, I agree. It's case-by-case. You just have to be a little careful that you don't have what appears to be a full discussion without having invited other people into it.
Yeah.
So someone comes in, some groups come in and they present something to you, you go, yeah, that's terrific, but then someone watching at home or finds out the next day, well, wait a minute, I have a different opinion on that. I didn't know they were going to discuss that. That's why you have to be a little careful.
Yeah.
There's nothing wrong with learning more from someone in a night. You just have to be a little careful what you do and how you participate. If you can imagine more than one side to an issue, that's the reason you just have to be a little careful. And that's the reason open meeting law tries to steer you that way. But there's never a reason you should cut off a discussion if you're listening.
Right. I'm thinking more of when a topic comes up and we, we listen and we can even inquire. If the board decides that they, they'd like to learn more and do more, my concern would be if you look at it and say, well, the agenda's full for three months, we can't talk about it until then. How do you, I mean, I guess you have to adjust priorities conceivably, right? You have to go through and say, you know what, this, we should put this onto the next agenda and push something else out.
What stops a good topic from having its own meeting?
Nothing. Yeah.
Call it a meeting.
Remember, two, two, two members can always petition the chair to put something on the agenda.
Right. So I think, Mark, I think your point is well taken and I think I'll sort of see how that plays out.
Yeah, we give some, I don't, I don't have a great answer, obviously.
Are there other agenda items that we would foresee?
This probably goes to the communications policy, but for example, this agenda has correspondence on it that we have not gone through in a full way, although in the town manager report, Bob mentioned that we've received quite a few emails on the Haverhill Street speed limit change. But for example, there was someone who emailed about bike covers.
Right.
And how do we, is that something that we should put on the agenda for next time or is the fact that it was here, I mean, we should be discussing it tonight? How do we, I guess, I don't know if this is an agenda item or if someone could clarify for me now, like how do we as a board respond to the, to residents' concerns that come in in between meetings?
So last year, we sort of came up with an informal policy that the secretary would respond to at least acknowledge the resident concerns, CCing Bob. And so I, as a secretary, took that on. That said, anyone is free to respond to any email that comes to all of us. Couple of things to note, just from a procedural perspective, is that people can contact us either individually, directly from the website or as a board in its entirety. The emails that come to us as a board as a whole, Bob is CCed.
And Caitlin.
Oh, and Caitlin, okay. The emails that only go to you as an individual from the website do not go to anyone else.
Which is what happened with some of those Haverhill Street emails.
A lot, a lot of them.
Of course, the person was only sending them to one person and so I don't get those. That's why they weren't in the packet. It's like I never even knew.
Yeah, you didn't know they existed. Right.
When he forwarded them all to the whole board this morning, then I got them all. I had never seen those before until.
When I saw that, I sent him a note and said, hey, you know, if you want it in the packet, you have to send it to everybody.
Well, and I think not everyone knows.
He just didn't think of that, actually. I think he was corresponding with you.
Well, and I sent him, I'll figure out what happened and he's already answered me, but I haven't had a chance to read it.
Yeah.
So from, from a procedural perspective, Mr. Secretary, if you could take on responding, I would do it in a fairly generic fashion. And then oftentimes the issues are resolved by town staff and so it's just a matter of CCing Bob and he directs it accordingly and then they handle it from there. But it is nice to get a response from us because they are emailing us. I think as.
So, I'm not sure I understand that. So Bob already was CCed if it came in. What is it that I can correspond other than, thanks for, for sharing your concern?
So the resident who's emailing us via the website doesn't know that Bob got it. And so to sort of, to bring them into the loop, I would say, thanks for reaching out to the board. I've CC'd the town manager here who's, who can answer your question or, you know, something to that effect. And then Bob would usually take it from there, depending on what issue it was.
So Bob, for example, would the, did the person who reached out with questions about making cycling easier and defer and writing, did, I responded as one board member with an acknowledgement type of email, but in terms of actually, how do we substantively how do we substantively address that resident's concerns, or any resident who would reach out to us about any... Did you say this is the history of what we've done in the past, or...
So it sort of depends on what... So something like that. So there's the items that have to do directly with town government staff, in which case I would direct them to Bob, and he and the staff would handle them. There are other issues, like that bike cover one, that falls into a little bit of a gray zone, or falls into sort of a bigger discussion, in which case, that might be something... And this goes to speaks to the communication policy, where we, as a board, need to decide how we're going to bring up those items. Do we set them as an agenda item? Do we ask Bob to look into it? So that's something that we have to determine.
By way of a communications policy.
I think that's the easiest way.
Okay. Okay. I'm just thinking about, I think it should be a priority of the board to give residents as substantive a response as we can.
Yeah.
Because I, to the extent I've responded to folks thus far, it's been with an acknowledgement. You know, I personally, you know, care about what you've had to say, but without a resolution.
Yes. Well, and sometimes that happens. We had one resident who lives near the highway that had asked about the sound barriers, and it turns out that that's actually a really complex matter. Bob's looking into it and working at the state level to find an answer there.
And I think that's totally fine. I just, I feel like there's a gap.
Yeah.
And I just don't know if, like, do things get lost? Or do emails, do resident concerns get lost in the high volume that come in?
I mean, I think we try. I think your concern is legitimate, and that sometimes they do. I keep a running tab. I have a list. And so, when I would talk to Bob, I'd say, "Hey, what happened with this?" And he'd say, "Oh, it was taken care of," or "Oh, this is the status." But I think from a formality perspective, so that everybody's on the same page, I think that'd be a great thing, to discuss how we want to figure it out.
And so communications policy, probably the place to do it.
Yeah.
And I think there's a difference between responding how you may be especially interested in the issue that they raise, and I think there's nothing wrong with a representative communicating that to a resident. But you can't... It's... You shouldn't indicate how you're going to vote on something, or, you know, you can't respond for the board, but...
Certainly can't respond as to what the board would do.
No, right. But I don't think there's anything wrong with you responding to a constituent, if you're particularly interested in that. The other tool you have in the topic that they raised, the other tool is, I often, if it's sort of a board matter rather than a town matter, I'll often refer them to the liaison that fits, best fits.
So are there... Before we move on to minutes and wrap this up, are there any other items that you'd like to see on a future agenda? And obviously, we'll revisit this.
At some point, we're going to have to have an open discussion about the second water meter. However it gets settled, just too much...
People always ask.
...noise and system on both sides of that. So I think we just have to have a, you know, an open discussion about it, or a hearing, or, I don't know, Bob, however we'd handle that, but we need some direction, I think.
So I've added that. And Bob, what I think we can do is, you and I can go over this list and see what makes sense, where we can fit.
Yeah, I try to put things under future agendas, near the end of your agendas, so sometimes that's a skinny list, sometimes it's bigger. All your ideas are always welcome to join that, and then the board figures out through the chair what you want to talk about.
All right, so, and...
This might be covered in a town manager's, in the next town manager's report, but I would ask Bob if you could just give us an update on the Haverhill Street...